Good evening and welcome to the December 13th, 2022, meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fitchburg. I now call this meeting to order. Please be advised that FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. I ask that anyone else in the audience who is recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating their name and address.
Seeing none.
Seeing none. I ask at this time that anyone who has an electronic device, please place it into silent mode so we all don't get to know your ringtone. And at this point in time, we're going to conduct the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Burns, would you be so kind as to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I will.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. For those of you new to the Zoning Board of Appeals, we take our items on an agenda which has a definitive time on it. If we have not yet reached the time, we must wait until the time is reached to call that matter on the agenda. We do not take, therefore, take them out of order. The first matter on our agenda is scheduled for 6:00. It is now 6:09 PM, so we will be calling that matter. I do, I am aware that a number of people are here for a matter that is down a few items on the agenda. Please note that I welcome all of you here and I welcome your comments. However, we will be limiting the amount of time for each person to comment. I am going to ask at the beginning of that comment period if any, everybody can raise their hand to express their thoughts in favor or whether they're here against the petition. And I'm going to ask if somebody else has made the same comment that you are going to make. Please try not to be repetitive with the comments so all of the matters can be heard in good time. Thank you, and again, we appreciate your coming to the meeting. First matter on the agenda is ZBA 2022-14. This is 76 Summer Street, and this is the review of a special permit under Section 181.94 of the Fitchburg Zoning Ordinance to operate an adult daycare service pursuant to Section 181.313(c)(1) located in the Neighborhood Business District. We have received a communication from the permit holder today, or excuse me, on December the 8th, and that communication is as follows. "I just wanted to follow up with an email to inform that I will not be able to attend the review next week. At the moment, we are still waiting for DPH and EOHS, State Department approval of our facility." We are supposed to be reviewed by DPH later this month. Upon inquiry to the applicant by the Building Secretary, a month in which the applicant feels positive there's enough time to have received that DPH approval would be February. And so there is a request to reschedule the review until February. I am going to note that because this is a review, we do not have a timing issue to worry about. Don't believe any board has made comment on this review. Does any board member have any comment on the review or the request for a continuance? Yes, Mr. McLaughlin?
Madam Chair, just during the visit, it appeared that they're not really up and running yet either. Space was empty, so...
I think board members had wanted to take a look at how operations were going once they were running, so I think that's a better expenditure of our time to wait until February. Any other board member? All right, seeing none, I would be looking for a motion on the continuance.
I'll make that motion under ZBA 2022-14 for the property at 76 Summer Street for review in February 2023.
Second.
And I'm going to ask Ms. Mata or Ms. Johnson for the date in February.
14.
14th?
Yep.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries unanimously. We have two minutes to wait until the next matter is called. That is going to be 447 Water Street. And we had a communication that the petitioner, applicant, permit holder would be appearing remotely. I do not currently see that person on the Zoom list, but we'll give them a few minutes. Ms. Peña, I can see that you are on the remote list, so I am going to allow you to talk. Can you please, ah...
Hi.
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes.
Great, all right. So we are at 6:15, so I'm going to call the next matter, which is the review of a special permit under Section 181.94 of the Fitchburg Zoning Ordinance at 447 Water Street to continue the operation of an auto dealership and repair shop pursuant to 181, 313D, 11, and 12, located in the Neighborhood Business District. This is ZBA 2022-21. All right. Ms. Peña, welcome to the review. How's the business going?
We're just getting it off the ground now. You know, it was a very, very long process to get the paperwork in. We just got the dealership license about, you know, a month ago. We've just got a mechanic in there now, and we're starting to move along. Still haven't procured our financing, but we're, we've got the application in, so we're just waiting on dealer plates and some financing. We have a couple, you know, cars, and we're trying to, you know, really get, keep, keep the, the repair portion of it going as much as we can.
So do you, you don't have any cars there for sale currently?
Well, we don't have, we can't insure the cars because we have insurance, but the insurance that covers the actual cars, that, that policy won't be effective until we have the dealer plates. And the dealer plates couldn't be applied for until we had the dealership license and the sign up. So once we got the dealership license, we applied for the dealer plates, and there is quite a bit of a backlog, so we're, we're waiting for our inspection from, I think it's the state police that do that, but, you know, but a lot of paperwork that, you know, we had to get in and sorted. So, no, we don't have, you know, we can, not for retail sale, no. We can broker a few car sales, but we can't put a, you know, actually sell on the lot until we have them covered by insurance.
Well, I wish you luck in completing the remainder of the paperwork.
Thank you.
Hopefully in a, a quick fashion.
Yes.
There are a number of conditions that I'm going to review, and I'm going to ask you to respond, and, and if it's, the answer is simply that you haven't been able to proceed yet due to completion of paperwork, that's fine, just let me know.
Okay.
So, the first condition is that it's to be operated according to the submitted plan. Have you varied at all to your knowledge from the submitted plan?
No, not at all.
Okay. No plastic or vinyl banners, professional signage only?
Yeah, we just installed a new sign. We had a, someone I work with who's a professional logo designer, designed a beautiful red and blue logo for us, and we made a, a sign out of it, and we've mounted it on the face of the garage. And I, you know, I quite like the way it looks. It's very nice, it's colorful.
No exterior storage of junk or, and no inoperable or dismantled vehicles outside of the property?
No.
Okay. No parking on the sidewalk or street? Hours of operation Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 7:30 PM, and Saturday, 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, closed on Sunday?
That's correct.
Consistent with what you're doing?
Correct.
And you haven't transferred ownership of the business from Peña Motors LLC?
No, it's still Peña Motors LLC.
And then we have a provision that you are not to operate as a public nuisance. The next provision is that you remove and replace the chain link fence on the top of the wall rear side of the property with vinyl fencing or superior product within 60 days of special permit issue. And I do know there was a bit of delay in the issue date. Tell me what the perspective is on that repair.
Well, we are going to need more time to sort out the issue because of conflicts we've had with the landlord concerning this issue and a couple of other issues.
Okay.
And it got to the point where we had to hire an attorney. You know, it's more costly. I had to put down a very large retainer deposit with the attorney. And I'm hoping that the issues that we're having with the landlord, it seems like they are being resolved a little slowly, but this was a problem because the landlord does not feel that it's his responsibility, even though it does say that the property owner has to repair this. And we, A, don't have the, you know, the funds for that yet, and B, I don't really, you know, I'm not really keen on, in putting money into capital improvements on a property that we don't own, that we can't take with us. Those are kind of two big sticking points. But obviously, something has to be done to move forward because you guys have, you know, mandated this, and I understand, and it's unsightly, it doesn't look good, we don't want that. So I, I think I would just ask for some more time to sort this out with him. It's been difficult to be the, in the middle of this because he, from the very beginning, when this was first brought up last summer, six months ago, had some very choice words about this and said he absolutely was not going to do this. He also said to one of the city council members on a three-way call with me that the city has no right to mandate something upon him when he was not even present at the meeting. So it's been sort of obstinacy there. And there, he, at one point declared that the property where the fence was did not belong to him, but then he turned around, I think a week later, and said that he would, that he had gotten an estimate for it, that it would be $3,000, and that he would put in $800 of 3,000. I asked him to send me a, an estimate, I'd like something in writing, and he, I've asked, I asked twice for that, and he refused to send me an estimate. And things were deteriorating on other, with other issues from there, so it's all kind of gotten muddled together into just kind of a bit of a, a mess of a conflict with him.
Okay. Ms. Peña, thank you for going through that to explain what's been going on. I'm sorry that you've been having some troubles complying with the condition. I am going to note that Mr. Mateo is in the audience and has been waving to me, so after we are done, I'm going to allow him a little bit of a, little bit of a time to speak.
Okay.
You know, we're not the body that's going to resolve this issue between the two of you, but I do hope that the two of you work together to, to comply with the, with the condition. I am going to assume that the same thing applies to the condition to remove signposts, concrete, and wires within 60 days. Is that correct, Ms. Peña?
Is what correct?
The same obstacle applies to that condition?
I assume so.
Okay, all right. Anything else you wanted to add before I move on to public comment?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you for coming to the Zoom meeting. I am going to take you off as far as speaking goes right now, and what we'll do is, if we need you to answer a question, we'll come back to you, okay? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Mr. Mateo?
Hello.
I see that you are here to make public comment, and I assume you remain the landlord of this property?
Absolutely, yes. I, I'm here because for every story, there are two sides.
There are, and I'm going to ask you, again, we're not the body that mediates that dispute, so please keep it brief.
Totally agree. I'm going to be speaking facts, which I think, for the record, my name is Harold Mateo. I am the owner of 447 Water Street.
And your address for the...
My address is 1118 Water Street, Fitchburg. It's where my office is located. I actually wanted to come before this body. I took a flight here from Florida just to make sure that I'm here for this particular reason, in addition to another reason that I'm speaking to on later. We own 447 Water Street for over five years, almost now. We did complete renovations to the building, including new electrical, new heating system, insulation inside, rubber roof, a bunch of things. We ran that primarily as Rayco Motors, Rayco Motors #2, and is where, we had a garage where primarily our focus was to repair our own vehicles. Now, I'm going to move forward. We decided to rent to Ms. Peña and her husband, Amadi Peña, at Peña Auto Sales. And from the very beginning, when this all started, I myself have walked through the process with them and helped file their letter of intent, prepare paperwork, submitted it for them, a bunch of things, right? Obviously, when things change and they don't go someone's way, then the perception of who you are as a person changes, and you all of a sudden become a bad person. Well, when I, when I leased this place for five years, four, which is almost coming on four, this was leased as a car dealership. Now, I have a copy of the lease, which I'm happy to share with the entire board here. They went forward and obtained a car dealership and approval for car service repairs. Now, when I was there and did my own repairs, I was keeping my own record straight with how we were handling materials, but when you have a tenant that is in there, I would like to ask this body to keep into consideration that this site is a clean site with no hazardous waste, it's got a clean 21E. I would like to see the right mitigation be in place if the intent is to use this for car repair for the public, like every other shop would have. So my intent was that they use it for their dealership, which I helped them apply for the license, got them the guy to make them the sign, got them the insurance, connected them with the floor plan people. I, I mean, I practically almost helped them set up the whole business. So I'm really, actually feel a little bit upset about the situation because I went above and beyond what any landlord should do in helping somebody get started and trying to welcome them into the City of Fitchburg because I've been here for over 30 years. But had I do, if I was to do this all over again, I never would, I wouldn't even lease to them. That, that's outside of the point. My request to you is that you actually consider that they have the right mitigation in place if they're going to be doing auto service repair for the public.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mateo.
Okay, thank you. And by the way, the lease states that the property was being leased as is from the point that it was leased, which means the repairs to the fence or anything else needs to be on them as the person, as the, as the people leasing the building, not myself. And so when I was saying the city council or, or the ZBA mentioned that I have to repair a fence, I wasn't even here to agree or not agree to that.
Thank you, Mr. Mateo.
You're welcome.
Again, we're not going to resolve the dispute between you and your...
Absolutely, and I'm not looking for a solution, we're getting there.
But I am going to note that I believe you had to sign the application in order for it to go forward.
And I did, absolutely, and there's nothing I've done to, to keep them from moving forward. In fact, I've tried to help them move forward, but I want to be clear about the intent of the use, which is on the lease, which is for a car dealership. And I think we need to have the right mitigation in place for any potential hazardous materials.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Is there any other member of the public who wishes to speak on this matter? Seeing none. I am going to note that we are about to move on to the next matter. Welcome, Mr. Reynolds. Does any board member have any comment on the condition of the property or the conditions that we've reviewed?
Yeah, I have one, one comment. So I'm assuming when she said sign, that, that's new, not the vinyl sign I saw over there a couple of days ago, because they had a, like a banner style sign, which I was hoping was temporary, because that's, that's definitely not what we wanted.
When we were there, they didn't see any banners.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I also noted that there was a pennant sign. Anybody have any other comment? Ms. Peña, I'm going...
I think the board's looking for a permanent professional sign.
Yes, yes.
Did we mention, did we mention in the conditions that there was supposed to be fencing put on?
Yes.
The upper, the, the top of the wall?
Yes, and what we...
That fencing up there is, Michael has pictures of it. If the board wants to see it, it's fallen over.
Yeah, it's been like that for...
It's on a 45-degree angle, and it's just good looking for a good wind.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I'm going to unmute the applicant momentarily.
Is that the fence that she was talking about?
Yes, that's the fence she was talking about.
Okay.
Ms. Peña, is, we've all seen a vinyl sign there, has that been replaced?
Yes.
And if not, that's been replaced?
It's been replaced with a permanent sign. I have a, we received a permit for that. The banner was temporary, so we could move forward with the license for the dealer plate, so you had to have some sign up. I received a permit for the temporary banner initially, so we could just get something up, and then a week later, we received the second permit for the permanent sign.
Great.
Someone stopped by the other day from the board, I'm not sure which member it was, but he stopped by and we had a conversation, and he took a look at everything.
Okay. So we do want to see the fencing, the fencing provisions fulfilled. I understand and can hear the dispute going on between the parties. I think the board has some leniency to let you have a little time to let this play out, but we did, we will want that fulfilled. And I, I'm going to say that, given that we're in December, I think that I would probably looking for a March-ish review to allow for some time, given the weather.
It's almost...
Okay. We have a motion from Mr. Burns, I believe, to continue the review and the fulfillment of conditions.
Until March.
Eight and nine. To the meeting in March, which is on March?
March 13.
13. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Ms. Peña, we are continued until March 13th. The board always appreciates a written update if you have one to give prior to the meeting. Thank you for your efforts to complete, comply with the special permit. We wish you good luck in fulfilling them, and good luck to your business in the meantime.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. All right, we are going to move to the next matter, which is ZBA 2022-31. That's 56 Cully Street. This is the continuance of a special permit under Section 181.313 of the Fitchburg Zoning Ordinance to open a motor vehicle body and paint shop located in the Neighborhood Business District. This is, the applicant is Yeldario Recio, yeah? Welcome, please have a seat. And if you could, Mr. Recio, if you could give your address for the secretary?
56 Cully Street.
And you, sir, as well?
My name is...
Name and address.
Area, 56 Cully Street, and come to talk to him a little bit because he asked me the favors, my friend.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at our last hearing, there were certain requests made to the applicant, and there was a desire to have a site visit on some of the, on the part of some of the board members. The requests were for a certified plot plan showing the number of parking spaces for employees, clients, and vehicles awaiting repair. Okay. The portion of the building that sits on the abutter's property should be squared away before returning to the board. We want to make sure that the applicant either is the owner or has permission from the owner for the entire building. All abandoned vehicles, parts, and debris to be removed from the property, and the, a plan for the part of the building that is in disrepair to be removed in a date of completion. All right. So you have in hand a certified plot plan.
Yes, I believe we have...
Can you bring that forward?
Everything, yes, excuse me.
Thank you. I'm going to hand this plan around to be reviewed. Are there multiple copies in there or one copy?
No, it's the only one right now. He just gave...
I got them in my, in my email.
Okay. Then please hold on, because this is going to take us a few minutes.
Yes.
We get some block plans.
I think they removed it.
Was that there the last time?
Oh, yeah. They removed it most visible.
That's a good pitch. There's room to be demolished on that side. We got one, two, three, four, five spaces here?
Yeah.
Okay. And that's obviously, that's the lift, that's the garage.
Where the heck is it? Where is it? Into the property.
So this is more of a, more of a construction than it is a place for...
Remember, we had that last, last year, last week, we had the picture of this property being cut like this.
Yeah.
Solutions.
Just a booth.
Exclusive cats.
This, this does address the other question we came up with. It shows how the operations this addresses that, but it doesn't-
Doesn't show the property lines.
If you'd brought the deed, it would have been shorter.
Yeah. All right. Let's pass it on the mic. It is what it is. It's not a plot plan. It was an architectural drawing.
So he bought it.
If the intent was to see the property lines, then we don't, we don't have it.
No.
Sit down today.
There you go.
More of an architectural drawing.
How much was it up to date?
Show the bounds.
For the record, the deed to the disputed property, which is on the right-hand side
of the building, was purchased by Yale Dario Recio on November sixteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and is recorded at book one zero four-six-four, page three-five-three. Right.
To the street, if this is even-
Now, Mr. Mr. Recio, you've removed all vehicles, parts, and debris from the property?
Yes, he did.
I was there for a visit last week and did see that there had been some substantial cleanup done, and I do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I think it's going to help improve that neighborhood greatly.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
Thank you. The, the rear of the property is still full of debris. There are barrels. I don't know if they're oil barrels, but there's still quite a bit behind the building. None of that has been cleaned up.
The slope that goes up from the fence to the next property, up?
And against, against the buildings. So I have some photos if you need to, like to view it.
And as I'm looking at this photo, which side of the building is it?
Rear.
The rear. Okay. So we talked about a partial, a part of the building, and that is a little shed that's attached to be removed in a date of completion. And can you give me your response on that?
What, if we have to remove, it's going to be removed. The problem right now with the weather is, don't help to do a lot of things outside.
If the board requires you to remove it-
You bring that back.
I can't.
[laughing]
If the board requires you to remove it, how long would it take you?
As soon as the weather come out, this weather come better, we, we make, somebody come and remove it.
Okay. I, I can't base it on the weather. Can you give me a time?
I'm talking about winter time. After winter time is going, so saying the, like he's trying to paint outside, and the guy who painted, he's like, can't paint outside with this weather. So it's a lot of things has to be improved.
Right. But I'm not talking about painting. I'm just talking about tearing down a-
Same thing, but tear it down.
Mm-hmm. I mean, there's snow on the ground, but I think we can all get through it. I don't think that the weather right now, for instance, although it's agreeably cold outside, I don't think it prevents you from taking it down.
Soon as possible. I'm no a contractor to tell you how long take it to tear it down, or I don't want to lie to you. So we're going to take, if that's what the board wants, we take it out as soon as possible.
Okay. So if the board required within thirty days, could you do that?
Yes, he say yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
My other board members have had a look at the plan. Mr. McLaughlin, I think you would like to ask some questions, so.
Not at this time. I think we need a certified plot plan that shows some dimensions for parking and basically what we had requested. This seems to be like an engineer type kind of sketch. So I don't know if we really want to, how far we want to move into this case.
Any other board member have any comment on the plan?
Yeah, the, the plan seems to be more of an architectural set of plans. We're looking for a plot plan, something showing the building in relationship to the, to the street and the property lines. That's, that's just a construction plan. It doesn't really show that.
The problem is, they just finished the process to buy the other piece of land. Now a survey has to come-
Right.
And, and do the plot plan you guys expecting. But the problem is, they just finished with a, with the sign, the little piece of property, I think like a six days ago. And it's just make the survey come to do the plot plan. It's two different things. So again, we know it's all legal now, that situation. But we use a survey people in Lomister, that's what we always we use. Even when I had the discrepancy problem in the line, they, they mark, make their marks. But those guys to get it is, I cannot promise they, I can tell you they're going to come and do it, because we already asked. I can, maybe I can find a letter for them to show you we're going to do it, or something like that.
Did they give you a date at all, or an estimate of how long it's going to take for them to complete it?
I, I can ask them again, and maybe they can write a letter to the ZBA to just tell you guys we having the lease. I, I can, I don't have the answer for you. But definitely it's part of the, the project. We just finish with one thing.
Going to go to public comment at this time. Is there any person here, other than the petitioner, seeking to speak on this matter?
Excuse me?
Is there any? Okay. Mr. Mateo, please approach the podium and once again state your name and address for the record.
Harold Mateo, eleven eighteen Water Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Actually know the petitioner for about twenty years. He does some really good quality work. I know Ariel through a mutual acquaintance that we have, and I know he really has been trying hard to get a business up and going here. And he used to be past Walmart in Lunenburg, but he does good work. So that's all. Good, sincere person.
Thank you for your comment.
Thank you.
Is there any other person here to which, who wishes to speak on this matter? Is there any other person here with, seeking information on this matter? Seeing none. I think the board is generally inclined. I'm going to take a survey by nodding of my co-board members to have that survey planned for the parking. Mr. McLaughlin has noted there's still some issues on the cleanup. I, but I did want to say I was very happy with the amount of the cleanup that had been done. I appreciate the effort.
It's a wheelbarrow there.
Mm-hmm.
No oil in the wheelbarrow, but it's a problem. It's kind of no easy with the mug right there in the back to take it out. But we're going to take it out. It's just a wheelbarrow, and I think it's two blank white pieces for the fence, old fence or something like that.
No, there are barrels. And what I'm concerned is what's in the barrels.
One is empty, and the other one, eh, no oil. I think it's grease, if I remember right. It's no oil. No one barrel with oil.
So I'm concerned about proper disposal of it, and when it's going to be cleaned up?
That when it's going to be cleaned up, maybe if I ask to the neighbor to go for the his size with a bobcap and take it out, we can do it right away. I don't think it's going to be a problem. We trying to do it for the other side, but was impossible. I try.
All right. I, I want to give you an opportunity to get up and running as soon as possible, so I would be willing to schedule you for January.
Okay, I appreciate that.
But you really need to get the plan to us.
Okay. And the plot plan, whatever Michael, whatever is there, no Michael C., whatever is there, and remove the little, past three things.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And if you find that you're not able to get the plan to us, please let us know ahead of time so we can continue you rather than having you come in. Okay?
Okay, all right.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. McLaughlin.
Just to help you move things along.
Yes, please.
In front of the building, there are some rough outlines for parking, okay? If you could, when you submit the plot plan, right, make sure there are dimensions, proper, proper parking spots, nine by eighteen. But on the plan, please reflect what can be parked on the property and not on city property. Because sometimes the, past the roadway is still public way, okay? So when you have the plan done by the engineer, just have them take that into consideration.
Take consideration about what is the city-
Yes, yes. So the plot plan we're asking for delineates, I believe, your piece of land.
If I remember right, for back in the days, is the, this tree is the line.
Sure.
It's no sidewalk there.
Right.
If I remember, I'm going to ask to the survey guy to put the marks, and now we, we're really one hundred percent sure about exactly what we're talking about.
Thank you.
One question for you guys. Is any way in this month he can get a permit for the electrician to put the, the spray booth? Because I believe we go in the good way to make it happen, so at least he don't lose more time to work. So at least by the, in a month, when we come back with every single three things you guys want done, at least he can be in the process. Because to order a spray booth is not one day to the next one. To get electrician is not one day to the next one either. So is any way he can do that a day and, you guys grant the opportunity to do that a day in the building?
To do what to the building?
Put the spray booth, just to win time. He needs a spray booth. He can not work without a spray booth. Body shop, you can not work without a spray booth. You can't.
I think that's a question that's best addressed to the building commissioner. Mr. Commissioner, do you wish to make a comment on that at all?
If, if the applicant wants to put a spray booth in and operate, that's, you know, yes, he will need a building permit, and we'll need some plans and specifications for the spray booth and fire suppression system and ventilation. But the real issue is, does the board want, you know, is that part of the board's decision? If it is, then, you know, we would start the process.
So I don't think we're going to move forward to decision tonight. And without the decision, I'm, I'm just going to instruct Mr. Recio to contact the building department. And if anything can be done to move forward without the special permit, you know, certainly I encourage you to seek that, that, that remedy.
So you guys recommend to go to the building department and ask them?
If there's anything that, any work that you can do prior to this receipt of the special permit. Okay?
Just keep in mind that you'd be proceeding at your own risk, because you don't have the approval.
Yeah, well, what we're trying to do is-
But you won't be able to come back in and say, I spent ten thousand dollars on the booth.
Well, it's only three things you guys asked me to be done right now.
Thing, if you want to move forward, you can't come back and say it's a hardship after.
No, no, I understand what you're saying. And you're right with that. But what I think, we almost in the line. If we got those three things done, I believe we can make it happen.
Yeah, I just, I just want to-
I just trying to be-
Serp, serp invent the, you know, hey, well, you know, we can't get that done. We can't get the plot plan, but we, we've already installed the booth. Now we want to operate.
Well, I trying to maybe-
At your own risk is-
Like at the building department say, make it inspect or if everything is in the plan, so next time we come here, at least everybody knows exactly where it's going to be the spray booth. Put everything. I, I just trying to make time, that's all.
I, I understand. It's just that, you know, building permits and use are, are two different things.
So you received your warning on that, and whatever you choose to do, I wish you good luck in it. But we need to move forward at this point in time. So I'm going to look for a motion on the continuance.
Phil?
Until the next meeting, which is January tenth.
Make motion on ZBA twenty-two-two dash twenty-one for the property at, oh, I'm sorry, twenty-two-two dash thirty-one for the property at fifty-six Cully Street for a continuance until January tenth, twenty-twenty-three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. We will see you in January.
Thank you.
Please work very hard to get your plan.
We want to make it happen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sir, I have the paperwork.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you for your time.
Here's your plan, too. Your engineer's plan.
The next matter is ZBA twenty-two-two dash thirty-four regarding four-eighty-five Clarendon Street. This is an appeal to overrule the building commissioner's decision under section one eighty-one point nine-one for the need of a use variance under section one eighty-one point three-one-three of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to change a conforming use to a non-conforming use. Thank you. To a non-conforming use as a two-family located in the residential A district.
Thank you, sir.
Now, Mr. Mateo, I believe you are the applicant on this petition.
I am, yes.
Welcome.
Thank you.
We have all received your application, and thank you for the updated parking plan.
You're welcome.
But I just, I want to note that this is, this was advertised as an appeal, but looking at your application, you are also asking for a special permit to change, alter, or extend a pre-existing non-conforming use, I guess in the alternative, right?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Go ahead, please, and tell us about your project.
Yeah. Good evening. Four-eighty-five Clarendon Street. It's a property we purchased almost a year ago. We've done some extensive work to it, new roof, new siding, cleaned up, painted the outside, the inside. It, it sits on plenty of land. There's enough parking spaces, way more than four as required to have a two-family, nine by eighteen. Essentially, what, what we're looking to do here is, and I have some pictures that I took today just kind of to show you for demonstration purposes. I'm not sure if they also gave you the floor plans that shows where it would be kind of sealed to make it a two-family. But in two-thousand and three, the assessor's office had it as a two-family. And we are essentially just looking to continue that use as a two-family. Right now, if you're looking at this screen right here, to, to make it a two-family, the, what I would be changing essentially is sealing that door, and where that window is, putting in an extra, an extra door for an egress. And then on the other side of, when you go through that and come out, it's this here. I would be putting another door there, which would have a landing that is less than like three feet, I mean, on, on the outside. It already has the other egresses on the other side, so.
Mr. Mateo, before you go any further.
Yes.
The real question for me looking at this application is-
Sure.
Is it currently being used as a single family?
When I bought it, the gentleman was using it as a two-family.
The, the use listed with the city is a single family.
Correct. It's, it's gone back and forth in the assessor's office from way back in the early nineteen hundreds. In the seventies, it changed, and two-thousand and three-
kind of sealed to make it a two-family, but in 2003, the assessor's office had it as a two-family. And we are essentially just looking to continue that use as a two-family. Right now, if you're looking at this screen right here, to make it a two-family, the, what I would be changing essentially is sealing that door. And where that window is, putting in an extra, an extra door for an egress. And then on the other side of, when you go through that and come out, it's this here. I would be putting another door there, which would have a landing that is less than like three feet, I mean, on, on the outside. It already has the other egresses on the other side, so.
Mr. Mateo, before you go any further.
Yes.
The real question for me looking at this application is.
Sure.
Is it currently being used as a single family?
When I bought it, the gentleman was using it as a two-family.
The, the use listed with the city is a single family.
Correct. It's, it's gone back and forth in the assessor's office from way back in the early 1900s. In the seventies, it changed, and 2003, it went to a multi-family. And now it's, it shows up as a single, but the use never changed as a multi.
Do you have any information or documentation to show us regarding the time period?
Yes, it should be in your application packet, the assessor's documents, which I submitted as well, which shows the assessor's card, and if you permit, I can look for it on my phone because I took pictures of it.
I'm going to look for it in the packet while you do that.
Actually, if you give me the application date, I can go back to the pictures here and look for, um, look for, for the image.
You submitted the application on, it's at least dated November 7th, 2022.
Got it, okay. So it's, you don't see it in your package there?
I'm not seeing it right now, but we're going to check with the building secretary to see if it's in the file.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Barbado. Can you display that for us?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
If Mr. Mateo would be so kind as to direct me to the.
Yes, I think this one here, if we're looking at it. Dwelling, up top, Mark, on the top left, does it say dwelling two? With a circle in parentheses in the left where it says dwelling, and then underneath it says garage. Right to the right of dwelling, does that say a number two?
Says 250.
Right there, where your cursor is, to the left. See the two in parentheses?
Dwelling two in parentheses.
Correct. And then there's another image, I'm glad, thank you, Mark, because we saw this together. There's another image, which is the assessor's card from 2003. I don't know if you have that one available there. Actually, right there, can you go back up, Mark? See that one, occupancy, multi-family in the top left? Okay, and this one, I think, this one was from like 19, I don't, I can't tell the year of this one. And then there's one, there's a newer one that's from 2003, that again as well, that shows it as a multi-family.
Yeah, on the assessor's card, there's a comment at the top that says, was semicolon, five, 2003, small in-law apartment, for what it's worth.
Yeah, so they've, so what, what I'm really looking here is for the formality of making it a legal two-family on the street. There's, there's six houses on that side of Clarendon Street, they're all multi-families. There's only one that isn't, which is my neighbor Jay. And I don't know if he came, but he wanted to come here and express his support as well.
Mr. Building Commissioner, could you go back briefly on that page? Thank you. So as I recall from a recent examination of the assessor's records.
Sure.
Code 101 is for single-family use. And so I see a change there from 2002, where we have a code 104. And to, to 2004, we have a code 101. Is that the point where it changed?
And before that, the earlier one that we saw, that was from the 1970-something, that was also a change, where it was a multi, and it went back and forth. From that point forward, the use really never changed with the person I purchased the property from.
Okay. I'm going to pause on your presentation and ask if there is any person here who seeks information on this petition? Is there any person here who would like to speak in support of this petition? Is there any person here who would like to speak against this petition? I see none. I am going to, Mr. Mateo, see if my board members have any questions for you.
Sure, thank you.
Any questions?
No. I don't think so. No, go ahead.
Mr. Reynolds? Mr. McGlaughlin?
Not for the applicant, for the commissioner.
The question I had has already been addressed by the applicant with egress. I noticed when I went to the site today, I only noted that there were two, but thank you for answering that ahead of time.
You're welcome.
Mr. Commissioner, do you have any comments on this application before Mr. McGlaughlin asks you a question?
My only comment is that the only information that I have is the information supplied by Mr. Mateo. So I don't know much about the property. I didn't have enough to make a finding that, that it was a two-family or that it wasn't. I, I believe, once a use is lawfully converted, it becomes impossible to turn it back to a non-conforming use. I, I have no other information than what is before this board, but I hope that a hearing process will help clarify the issue.
Thank you. Mr. McGlaughlin, your question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Barbadora, how are you tonight?
I'm good, thanks, Michael.
Just looking for a little bit of clarification. Your denial letter states that the applicant would need a variance. Is that correct?
I'm not sure that a variance is even allowable, given the fact that it's a residential district. I think ultimately, the only thing that, that you could do is make a, in my view, my opinion, is that you could make a, overturn the determination based on the fact that the, the use was never withdrawn as a two-family. So I don't, it's a residential district, and therefore, we don't allow use variances, and there is no special permit provision.
Thank you, and, and that was my question. My next question was exactly that. The bylaws don't allow us to grant a use variance in residential, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Bellevue, any questions? Comments? At this time, I'm just going to give you my comment on this.
Sure.
Which is that I don't, I don't have a particular problem with the project, but I do have an issue with the fact that it was ever a single family. Which is, is as the building commissioner says, once a non-conforming use reverts to a conforming use, if it was ever a single family, it can't go back to that non-conforming use, which, which is the two-family. Two families are not allowed in the district.
Sure.
I would be, if you wanted to go through a more detailed presentation of evidence on this issue, I would be willing, on the issue of whether it was a single family in actuality, or whether it was never actually a single family. I, I'd be willing to hear that out if you wanted to gather some more evidence.
I mean, outside of me just having to close one wall and open up two egresses and show you the assessor, assessor cards that showed that in 2003 and prior to that, it was assessed as a multi-family, and the person who I bought it from used it as a multi-family. I'm just looking to make it legal, because I like to do my things right.
Right, but the board, the board is not empowered to do that if it was ever a single family.
Well, it was a single family.
Mr. Mateo, even if the board likes your project, which I, I actually do, we're not empowered to grant that relief if it was ever a single family. So we have to get over that issue before we can look at the details of your project.
Correct. I, I understand that part.
Yeah.
What, what I understood from Mark was though, that there could be relief in that overturning his finding, which is what he was saying, under the understanding that since 2003, it has continued to be a multi-family, which is, actually, I think you pointed out, it was 2004 as well, which it was last assessed as a multi and hasn't changed. I think that's what I'm looking for tonight.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you think you would be able to present any evidence other than what you've already given to the board? Or would you like the opportunity to do that?
You mean in addition to the assessor's cards? And the pictures that I've shown? I mean, I can show you pictures of the building and the floor plan that really it's, the guy opened up the wall because his mom was living with him there. I, I can't think of bringing him here, that would be a little difficult. He lives in Lunenburg now. I don't, I don't know what else to bring you.
Okay.
I mean, if you give me some suggestions, I'm more than, more open.
So, you know, I, I don't represent you, Mr. Mateo.
Of course.
Trying to help you a little bit.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
And so I'm going to then, that to me is an answer, that to the best of your knowledge, you don't have any other evidence other than what you've presented to the board?
No, besides the use from the person who I purchased it, that was using it as a multi, and the layout of the property that shows that it's a multi, and the assessor's card, which is a legal document, which showed that it was a multi. I don't really know what else to show you. I mean, I can't get anymore. I can't, I can't make anything else up. I mean, that's just the lead, that's what, that's what's available, right?
All right, thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
The board can understand that.
What I'm going to do then is I'm going to close the hearing as to the appeal.
Sure.
Okay, and then I'm going to ask for board discussion on the appeal, starting with you, Mr. Shatron.
Yeah, so all we have is the assessor's card. That's, that's all of the evidence. So I, I think we'd be looking for something in 2003 that a two-family was permitted use. Accessory apartment, something like that, some, any kind of other evidence. We need something to show that it was legally converted to a two-family and not just used as such.
I don't know that, I don't know if he went through the process of legally converting it, right? Like, I don't, I'm.
Probably couldn't is what we're getting at, because.
I'm not aware of, yeah, I'm not aware of, of any, I mean, I'm not aware of that. Yeah, I mean, besides, all of the other houses on the, on where I am are multi-families.
How many meters do you have?
One, because his mom lived with him. He wasn't, he paid the bill for her.
So I'm, sorry, and.
An in-law apartment would still be a single family.
So I'm just going to interrupt this for a moment, and I, I apologize because I was looking at something online and got distracted. But we've closed the hearings, so.
Oh, my apologies.
I know, you were asked, you were asked a question, you were responding, I understand, so. Any other comment on deliberation?
No.
Mr. Byrne?
No, bud.
Mr. Reynolds?
I like the project. And I wish the applicant would take the opportunity to go and find some more information. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bellevue?
Gallagher.
Gallagher.
It's okay.
I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I have nothing to add.
Mr. McGlaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this is pretty straightforward. You know, with regards to the, the variance. As Commissioner Barbadora stated, we're not, we don't even have that ability to grant a use variance in RA, right? That's, that's the first piece of it. Second piece of it is, the applicant actually has requested to grant a special permit to change or alter or extend a pre-existing non-conforming use, and as was stated earlier, that non-conforming use, once the property changed to a conforming, we can't revert back. So I, you know, think this is pretty.
Thank you.
Pretty straightforward with the information provided.
Appreciate it. It never has changed back to conforming. That's, I'm glad you pointed that out. Thank you.
And for my comment, I'm going to note that I was, what I was doing was pulling up the current assessor's record, which shows a single-family use as the current use. Based on that, I am going to close the deliberation, and I'm going to look for a motion on the appeal.
Two votes?
Two votes.
Okay.
Does anybody have a motion to make in the affirmative on the appeal?
I'll make the motion on ZBA 2022-34. I think the first vote is going to be the request from the petitioner to overrule the decision of the building commissioner, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so that's motion number one.
Do we have a second?
In the affirmative.
In the affirmative.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher? All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. So that motion unanimously fails and the appeal is rejected. And I'm also looking for a motion in the affirmative on the request for a special permit to modify a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Okay, I will make that motion as well under ZBA 2022-34. And that is to grant a special permit to change, alter, or extend a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Second.
In the affirmative.
Okay. All those in favor?
No, excuse me, I'm sorry. Spoke out of turn.
So no one in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously fails. Mr. Mateo, I am sorry, it's, it's circumstances, and I don't want to drag it out for you.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it just, clearly, I mean, I've been before this board, I think, at least 12 times. This one makes no sense. I mean, the house is laid out as a two-family. And now you're telling me I can't, I can't use it as a two-family. I gotta use it as a single when it was, since 2003, it hasn't been used as a single. That's, I don't know. I mean, I don't know what other evidence I can bring you besides a card that shows clearly it was a multi-family. So should I be, what, appealing your decision?
So if you wanted to appeal, which is absolutely your right, it's within 20 days after the decision, the appeal is to court. And I definitely would work on some evidence about whether it was never actually used as a single family. That's what you'll need to show on appeal.
May I ask you a question about that? When you say that it was never used as a single family, do you mean from which point, because it goes back and forth? From which point am I showing you that it wasn't used as a single family?
So unless you can show that a two-family use was allowed or that a special permit or variance was received.
For that property.
From 1945 forward. Then if it was ever used as a single family from 1945 forward, without permission that I don't think can be granted, you can't then go back to a two-family, a three-family, a four-family. You can't convert back.
Why would the assessors just go back and forth then?
I don't know, but I, I think we're, we've reached a vote, so I think.
No, that's fair. I'm just trying to understand this one, because, I mean, literally, the parking spaces are there, everything else on the street, it's multi.
If it were a different zoning district, we'd be having a different conversation.
Got it. All right, well, thank you. We tried.
Good luck. All right. Our next matter is ZBA 2022-35 on 1341 Ringe Road. I'm going to note that this matter and the next matter both touch on the same piece of property. They are scheduled for 7:00 and 7:15, so we are within time. And I do want to consolidate, although I know there are some different issues presented. I would like to consolidate the presentation on these two matters. These are both appeals. The first is to appeal to overrule the building commissioner's decision under Section 181.91 for the need of a use variance under Section 181.313 of the Fitchburg zoning ordinance to change a conforming use. I apologize, I just read the last matter to you. I am so sorry. An appeal to overrule the building commissioner's cease and desist order under Section 181.91 to expand the lawfully pre-existing non-conforming mobile home park, requiring a special permit under Section 181.333, located in the rural residential district. The second matter is an appeal to. an appeal to overrule the building commissioner's cease and desist order under Section 181.91 for earth removal, requiring a special permit from the planning board at the mobile home park located in rural residential. Welcome to our meeting. If you could each please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Alex Para. I'm an attorney with the Augustine Levine Para and Nepper. I'm here representing Joanne Hamburg.
Hi, I'm Joanne Hamburg McGurn. My address is 54 Chase Road. That's my working address, and I own Woodland Estates.
Wonderful. Yes, if you can make sure to speak up and bring the microphone-
A little short.
...so we can all hear you. I did, before we start in today, I wanted to note for public record that I did file a conflict, a conflict of interest disclosure on this matter. The, it is under the potential for an appearance of a conflict of interest, and the issue is that I represented as an attorney a purchaser of one of the mobile homes, a mobile homes, manufactured housing, and the sale was concluded in December of 2021. I don't feel that there is regardless any conflict in my handling of this matter, and have disclosed the same to the public and to the appointing authority.
Madam Chair, the applicant has no objection to you sitting on this matter.
Thank you, appreciated. All right.
Those are the documents that you let me read.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to the meeting. Please proceed on your presentation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board. So we submitted as part of our appeal, some documentation. You should have two packages, one with each appeal with various exhibits and attachments. Last week, we also submitted a letter via email with further exhibits, and I just want to add a few documents to the record, if I may, Madam Chair. So I haven't sorted sets of shooting documents. So the additional documents, Madam Chair, are records of two building permits issued in 2009 for units in development, and we've also provided some earth calculations from Mr. Frank Preston, who's an engineer, who did calculations from the site plan. So that's the body of the documentation that we've submitted to you in connection with these appeals. I want to give a little bit of background here. This project, Woodland Estates, was permitted with a planned unit development special permit in 2006. And in connection with the issuance of the planned unit development special permit, the building commissioner at the time issued a formal written determination that the use that was proposed under the planned unit development special permit was permitted under the zoning ordinance. So that's a starting point. Since 2006, this project has gone through multiple permitting procedures, sewer extension, a building permit for retaining wall, planning board has addressed and made modifications to the conditions of the special permit on at least three occasions, with the last one being in April of this year, when planning board requested to put a deadline on the completion of this project of December 31st, 2024. So we have a long history, and during that approximately 16 years, this is one of the exhibits that we gave you with a letter last week, more than 200 permits have been issued in this project. There are building permits, demolition permits, sewer connection permits, permit to operate the project of up to 54 units, and all of this apparently without any controversy until the building commissioner, from our perspective, someone out of the blue and without any, you know, event causing a reexamination, on October 13th issued these two cease and desist orders. The first cease and desist order is, in essence, a determination that this is a pre-existing non-conforming use that requires a special permit from the zoning board of appeals to expand the pre-existing non-conforming use. And the second is a determination that requires an earth removal permit. So the present status of the development is that 15 of the 17 units that existed back in 2006 have been replaced, repaired, rebuilt. I don't know how you want to phrase it, but they're new. And in addition to that, building permits for an additional 24 units over the 17 have been issued. Units have been constructed, installed.
Pardon me. Could everybody please make sure that their electronic devices are silenced? Thank you, appreciate it. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Bringing the total number of units in existence to 41, all with building permits, all issued by the building commissioner, many of them, if not the majority of them, issued by the current building commissioner. My client has spent in excess of $7.8 million on infrastructure for the development, including bringing a sewer, extending the roads, you know, all of the work that goes into a development of this nature, all in reliance upon the issuance of the planned unit development special permit, determination of the building commissioner in 2006, and the many, many subsequent building permits that have been issued. So, you know, that's the background. I have to say, I've been in this business for almost 40 years now. I've never had a situation where this far into a project, there's suddenly a determination that the permits that were issued and the determinations that were made, you know, are invalid, because that's effectively what the commissioner's cease and desist order with respect to the non-conforming use is. The planned unit development special permit was issued based upon a determination, at least based in part upon a determination by the building commissioner, that the use was permitted, not non-conforming, but permitted. And that special permit, the planned unit development special permit, was never appealed. The building commissioner's determination in 2006 was never appealed. It could have been appealed by a butters, it could have been appealed by the building commissioner, it could even have been appealed by this board. And yet, nobody appealed it. Project is proceeded not by stealth, out in the open, all permits, conservation commission, orders of conditions, the works. And I would suggest to the board that 16 years later, you cannot come forward and challenge the finality of the planned unit development special permit, or the determination that the building commissioner made back in 2006. Now, I've heard it said, in connection with this matter, that the building commissioner has the authority to change his mind. And I would agree that he has the authority to change his mind in the context of the issuance of a building permit, because a building permit, rather like a, you know, approval not required plan issued by the planning board, is not a binding determination of zoning. And for that, I would point to the provisions of the statute, general laws, Chapter 48, Section 7, which says the building permits effectively are open to challenge for a period of six years. But that's not what we have here. What we have here is a special permit, and when the appeal period expires and no appeal has been taken from the special permit, it is final. It is binding upon the city, it's binding on the applicant, it's binding on the building department, it's free from challenge, and it can be relied upon so long as it is exercised within a period of time allowed by the statute. And the building commissioner's determination in 2006 is also not a building permit that's open to challenge at any time. It's a determination that was issued and was subject to appeal in an appellate process. It could have been appealed to this board, pursuant to 48, Section 8, and it would then be open to a determination by the zoning board of appeals, and ultimately to court if somebody was dissatisfied. That determination was not appealed. It is final, it is binding, and the building commissioner is bound by it. So it's our position that the cease and desist order that says we need to, that the planned unit development special permit is no good, and we need to come to you for a different special permit, is barred by the provisions of the statute, barred by the fact of the determination and the planned unit development special permit.
Attorney Para, could you speak to the earth removal portion of the appeal?
Certainly. So, again, we had a period of process, 16 years of development with, I'm not going to call it earth removal, because that has a, you know, specific definition in the zoning ordinance, but there were clearly, you know, earth materials have been excavated, earth materials have been moved, earth materials have been pushed about. None of that was by stealth, it's all in the open. And again, we've had a process of 16 years where the building commissioner has not, you know, required an earth removal special permit. Now, you guys probably know, I don't appear in Fitchburg often. In fact, I don't remember the last time I appeared in Fitchburg, so I won't speak to the practice and procedures that the city has adopted. I have been told that the city does not usually or ever require an earth removal permit where a special permit has been issued. And I provided you a link to the planning board hearing on this matter in April, where the chair of the planning board responding to a member of the public asking questions, that whenever a special permit has been issued for a project, it's practice of the city not to require an earth removal permit. So I said, I don't have the experience to tell you whether that's correct or not in the city, but that's what I was told. In any event, throughout the 16 years of this project, the earth removal has not been regulated by the city. The road is complete to Station-
900.
900, okay. I provided you with a letter from Mr. Preston with calculations as to the amount of earth materials going forward, and this is based on calculations drawn off the site plan. Amount of earth removal going forward to complete the project does not meet the definition of earth removal under the ordinance because of the allowance, the 150% allowance based on gross floor area of all the buildings in the development. So that's pretty much what I have to say about that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Attorney Para. We have many people here tonight. I am just going to note for everyone, it's not my expectation that we're going to reach a determinative vote tonight. What I would, will be doing is allowing opportunities for everybody to speak. Our, our city solicitor is here, and I would like, since the building commissioner made the decision, I believe the city solicitor, if he would like, should have the opportunity to respond. Then we're going to go to public comment, okay? Attorney Poussetteri, do you, would you like to make a response? No? Okay.
Please.
Okay. Mr. Commissioner, would you like, would you like to make a response, Mr. Commissioner?
Yes, Madam Chair. A couple of, a couple of items I'd like to bring to the attention of the board. The first is, I'm, the notices I sent did not challenge the validity of the planned unit development special permit, although I do question whether or not such a permit could actually be issued by the planning board, given the fact that at the time, the planned unit development was being applied for. There was definitions in the zoning ordinance. One was for a mobile home, and one was for a single-family dwelling. These planned unit developments in a rural residential district only allowed single-family dwellings to be issued, both then and now, in the zoning bylaw. One could argue that a mobile home is a single-family dwelling, but the, if there's a special definition and one is more specific than the other in the bylaw, we typically would apply the special, the special definition that is more specific. And if both are equally specific, then the more restrictive regulation would govern, and that would be no to that. I also want to bring to the attention of the board that I was not disagreeing with the building commissioner's opinion that a planned unit development special permit was approvable, and I was also not disagreeing with the previous building inspector, two of them, that both made determinations that the mobile home park was a pre-existing non-conforming- that the mobile home park was a pre-existing non-conforming use. There are three opinions. One said that you could build a planned unit development out of mobile homes. Another one said that it needed to be extended. And another one said that you must get a special permit from the ZBA to expand a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use. So, the, that actually took place. Ms. Hamburg came before the zoning board of appeals to expand a lawfully pre-existing non-conforming use and was denied. So I was reliant upon the fact that that permit was denied. And whether or not the planned unit development special permit is valid or invalid does not invalidate the requirement that the applicant obtain a special permit to expand a pre-existing non-conforming use. In my opinion, that's, both would need to be satisfied. Or at a minimum, the expansion of the pre-existing non-conforming use. So when I saw that, that gave me pause. That was my reason for it. Insofar as the traditions of Fitchburg relative to earth removal permits. Earth removal, I personally have sent other projects to the planning board to obtain earth removal permits. One that comes to mind is the one called Game On, which had a special permit and no earth removal permit. And they were moving earth. And so I made them go back to the planning board and get a finding from the planning board. So that's how I have dealt with it. Rightly or wrongly, that was my understanding. Once the volume, you're allowed a certain volume to remove of earth based on your building permit. And that's 150% of the volume of the building. Once you exceed that, or if it is not associated with a road in conjunction with a definitive subdivision plan, you need to get an earth removal permit. So those are, that was my rationale. My rationale was, really didn't have anything to do with the planned unit development. My rationale was, I saw a need for an expand, a special permit for an expansion of a non-conforming use and I saw the denial of this board. And, I mean, that's all I have to say. I can think of at the moment.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner. All right. We have received several pieces of correspondence, which I'm going to note at the end of the public comment, with the exception of the correspondence from the Board of Health. If I can locate it. The Board of Health made the following comment on the appeal of the cease and desist orders. Comments on expansion. Operations must include dust control plans and measures, bathroom facilities for workers, and litter waste control measures. Health Department has received numerous complaints regarding blasting, excessive dust generating activities, noise, workers utilizing the woods for relieving themselves, and litter waste debris generating activities during the operations. And the same comment is made regarding the earth removal. No change. Okay. All right. At this point in time, because I know many people are here to express their opinion, this is what we're going to do. I'm going to take a couple of polls. You may raise your hands to indicate your support in response to the questions. I am then going to go to the Zoom attendees who wish to speak. Anyone who wishes to speak, please raise their hand. We will then go to the public attendees and we will hear you to speak. Again, I ask if somebody has already made the comment you're going to make, try not to be repetitive. We are going to limit comment to, okay, my first poll is, how many people here would like to actually get up to the podium to speak? Okay. Three minutes per speaker. Mr. McLaughlin is kindly going to be our timer on that. So just remember, that's your time. Please keep your comments short. Anyone who would like to submit a longer comment may submit their comment in writing to the building department. You are welcome to do so. The board will see it prior to the next hearing. Okay? All right. First question. How many people are here to express their support for the appeal? Okay. Thank you. How many people are here to express their opposition to the appeal? Right? And how many people are here in a different matter related to this property? Okay. Thank you. All right. I see that we have one Zoom participant whose hand is raised. That is Mr. Hal Malanson. Mr. Malanson, I'm going to allow you to talk. Please state your name and address before you begin. You are limited to two minutes. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Attorney Tree. If Mary Ellen, Mary Ellen Christian would like to speak, I would, I will leave the comment. I was just raising my hand for that.
For my poll.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Thank you, Mr. Malanson. Counselor Marissa Fleming is raising her hand. Ms. Fleming, you're welcome to speak.
Thank you, Chairman Tree. I'm actually caught in the middle of this because I represent both sets of residents. I am the counselor for Ward 5, representing the neighbors that border the Woodlands Estates and the ones who live in Woodlands Estates. But the only people that have gotten a hold of me are the people that surround. And I have been getting calls from these neighbors for six, almost six years. We're going on six years now. And I had spoken to a previous counselor and he said he had received phone calls regarding this PUD as well. I'm not going to go into what a rural residential is because I think everybody knows what that is. But what I have to note is that for the past 16 years, the residents of this rural residential neighborhood have had to deal with mining, blasting, crashing, banging, jackhammering in large construction equipment, disturbing the very reason why people move to this area. It's not just the neighbors that hear this or feel this. They feel this all the way over onto Billings Road, which is off of Ashby State Road, several miles away from where this is being built. So if I had started living in that neighborhood at 50, today I would be 66 years old. If I was 60 when I moved in that neighborhood, I would now be 76 years old, which means this is how long this project has been going on. So what this says to me is that I think we should just keep the cease and desist order and give these people some peace in this neighborhood. Have her finish one unit, whatever she has left to finish, and end this project. Because it is not healthy to these constituents of mine. The constituents that live in Woodlands Estates did know what was going on. So they are aware, when they, they bought into this, when they bought their unit. So that's all I need to say.
Thank you, Counselor Fleming. I don't see any other persons online who wish to make comment or at least have their hands up. Kathleen DeChamps, I am going to unmute you. You have three minutes.
Hi, thank you for allowing us to speak. My husband, Ron, is here as well. And we are in a butter. And we actually allowed our road to be used as part of when she was creating her other new road. But when this all happened, we've been here 16 years and our circumstances have changed quite a bit. We did not expect that this would be going on this long. And we have, I work from home. And I tell you, I cannot sometimes even talk to people. I'm in the house with my, my window shut and I cannot have a conference call with a client. So it is impaling. And people really need to understand that. Day in and day out, six days a week lately, they are doing Saturdays again. And the only reason why they stop the Saturdays is because she's selling the houses. She's showing the houses on Saturday. So I always look forward to a Sunday because I know they don't work that day. Thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right, we are now going to move to in-person participants. Okay? Please approach the podium, state your name and address.
My name's Lorelei McClure. I live at 146 Nigel Court. It's quite interesting, for one, that my counselor said I did not contact her since I've tried to reach out and contact her multiple times. I have lived in Ward 5 for 34 years. I moved from Lunen, right off of Lunenburg Street, Redmond Place. I sold my house and moved to Woodlands Estates. I built my house brand-new in Woodlands Estates. I had looked at Woodlands Estates for multiple years. I happen to be the one, by the way, that used Attorney Tree. So yes, I purchased my house at Woodlands Estates. And I had looked at Woodlands Estates for many years before I moved there. So I was well-aware of the construction that was going to be happening. Construction happens from 7:30 in the morning to 3:30 in the afternoon. When we move in, we understand that there's going to be construction going on. Construction, if there's blasting, it may be once a week, once a month. I am one of the newer houses, so I was right up near where the blasting may happen. We're well-aware when it's going to happen.
We're not, though.
It's not awful. I had, for the last, the first six months of the year, a big pile of sand, stone, right next to my house. It wasn't horrible. If you really want to know what's going on, I can tell you what's happening. Yeah, we've had trucks going in and out by our houses. It's not extremely bad. No, I haven't been there the last 16 years, but it is doable. What's not doable is the fact that this cease and desist order stopped me from having my paving done this year. This cease and desist order stopped my landscaping from happening this year. This cease and desist order has done a lot of damage to what I need to have done. If my work can't be done in my community as a 55 and older person, that's what's causing the hassle. You want this work done? The neighbors want this work done? Get rid of the cease and desist order and let my neighborhood get finished. I'm a long-term resident of Fitchburg. In Fitchburg. I brought my children up here in Fitchburg. This is supposed to be my long-term home here in Fitchburg. Don't just think of one property owner against the other. Think of the 40-some-odd homeowners who live in Fitchburg.
Thank you, Ms. McClure. You've reached time. Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am, in the back in the camo-colored coat. Please approach the podium and state your name and address. You have three minutes.
My name is Fran Lynch. I live at 161 Nigel Court. And I really think that the neighbors are greatly exaggerating about the noise, about not even be able, being able to make a phone call in their house. I'm directly across the street from where all the work is going. And I don't have any trouble conversing on the telephone or listening to the radio or my, or my television set. My house is not excessively covered in dust and grime. I think this is a lot of exaggeration. I'm sure they're sick of the noise, but I don't, I really don't believe that it's excessive, as excessive as they say it is.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate your comment. In the back, please, in the blue. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Catherine Bennett. I live at 130 Nigel Court. My husband and I have lived there for three years now. And I know you asked us to not be repetitive, but I did want to address the noise issue as Fran just brought up. My husband is a DBA at a major hospital in Boston and he works remotely because he is disabled. And he is on conference calls every day, most of the day. And we have never had noise issues or he's never been able to attend or hear any of the meetings that he's attended remotely due to noise, even when there was blasting in one month. And I'm sorry, I tried to look up the date because I actually took videos of the blasting. In the three years that we've lived here, that was the only month that there was ever blasting in our tenancy. And so the noise issue, I agree with my neighbor, is greatly exaggerated. Also, we're not mobile homes. We are single-family dwellings. Even though they are manufactured off-site in complete pieces and delivered to where they are finally rested, they are permanent structures there. It would, it would demolish them to remove them and you can't hook them up to a truck and move them down the road. So those are two of the things that I wanted to address.
Thank you. We appreciate your comment. Ma'am, in the front in the white, please. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address.
My name is Lorraine DeVincendis and I live at 127 Nigel Court in Fitchburg. I've been there almost three years. A lot that they talk about blasting took place in the summer months. And in all honesty, you could be in my home and not hear it. So I'm a little bit confused about the exaggeration of it being so very disturbing. A number of us have private businesses that we work from our home with conference calls and various means of communication by the telephone. And I've never once had an interruption in my business. I think that it concerns me greatly because many laws have changed. We are a manufactured home. It is a big investment. It's my home. I want my project finished. I want my little neighborhood to get even better.
In the black. Name, address, you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Michelle Rajat. I live at 101 Nigel Court. We've been there for almost two years. I am a retired nurse. And I feel with this cease and desist order, you're being a, it's an abuse to the elderly. 55 on up were considered elderly. Now, we have some brand-new homes. They can't have a driveway paved. They can't have a driveway paved, they can't have their road paved. We have people that are using walkers. We have people that are using wheelchairs, people walking with canes. Now, what's going to happen in the winter when all the frost starts to go away and you have mud and you have to have an ambulance go over there? That's not going to happen. That ambulance is going to get stuck. So I really feel this, this order, it really needs to stop so we can finish our community. This is not even just a community, it's a family. We take care of each other.
In the back on the right.
I've lost it coming up here, but I can do it.
Appreciate your not having that.
My name's Brenda Whitmore. I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
My name's Brenda Whitmore. I live at 118 Nigel Court. I was lucky enough to go and look at this place in 2020. Take a little drive around with my husband. We're ready to move. We can't do a three-story, what I thought was my retirement home in Hubbardston, a nice little community. All of a sudden, I got a knee surgery. I got neck surgery. I can't go up three floors. I look in, we drive up, I see somebody sitting out on the porch, reading a book. I, of course, stop in and chat right away. What do you think about this place? Get brought right in, shown the place. I'm in love. I talk to my husband, he's in love. This is my retirement home. It's 2020, the year of all kinds of crap happening. Do I get my home? Yes, I do. In the six months I've been promised, yes, I do. And there was noise at some times, there was different things. I've dealt with noise. I've dealt with nothing, but it's the best place I could ever live. I'm living the dream. People have been asking me all along, how do you like your new place? I've lived in Pittsburgh for many, many years and then I moved to Hubbardston. I came back here to this community and these people are amazing. And so was the lady who started this thing. She had a dream and she made me live my dream. I'm living my dream with my husband. He works every damn day. We're paying a little bit of a mortgage, not much, but we're living a dream. And these people, they're amazing that we are with. And I'm sorry if there's a little bit of noise down the street, but it is going to end. It's going to end. Sorry it took a little bit longer, but isn't that a bunch of politics anyway? Doesn't everything take a long time? This is progress, man. We are progress. There's a big opportunity for the elderly and we are all here. There's a lot of us, a lot of us elderly. And we need places to stay as much as everybody else. We deserve that right, too.
So I want to... I want to allow everybody to speak who wishes to speak, but again, I don't want to hear us, have us all be here all night. So I'm just going to remind everybody to not be repetitive. We certainly acknowledge that the vast majority of you are here in support of the appeal and acknowledge that. Again, who would like to speak? Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Lisa Evans and I live at 10 Weld Street in Rosendale, Massachusetts.
Could you repeat your address again, ma'am?
10 Weld Street, Rosendale, Massachusetts. So I am here because I am an urban farmer in the city of Boston. I started a project with my partner three years ago to build an urban farm. Our large problem on our urban farm is that our soil is of very, very poor quality and we have to grow everything in raised garden beds. I was very fortunate that a friend of mine that lives out in this direction saw the sign that Joanne had put up for soil for sale. And so I contacted Joanne and I said, I want to come out and see the site and I want to test the soil. And she very graciously said, no problem, come on out and you can take your soil samples. So I came out with a bucket and she very nicely lent me a shovel. And I took the soil samples. I sent them to Pace Analytical, which is a professional lab that tests for PFAS. PFAS are forever chemicals that have been in the newspaper recently. And I tested it also for heavy metals at the University of Maine. In between the time that I waited for my test results with my fingers crossed that they would come back with clean soil, the cease and desist order arrived. And so I, Joanne got in touch with me and she said, I'm sorry. I am glad you got good news that the soil is super clean and of high quality and would be great for your raised garden beds that we won with a grant from the state of Massachusetts called the Coronavirus Food Insecurity Grant, but I can't sell you the soil until the cease and desist order goes away. So I'm here because we would very much like to purchase from Joanne 400 cubic yards of soil, which would be approximately 13 truckloads of topsoil. The soil has already been mounded at the back section of her site. It's there, it's really high-quality soil, which has been very hard for us to find in Massachusetts. A lot of the soil that we've looked into purchasing is not of high quality, even though it's for sale.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate the comment.
Madam Chair, could I ask that you reiterate to the audience to speak to the petitions?
Yes.
Thank you.
So again, the petitions are for appeal of the cease and desist order. I have heard, I think definitively from all of you that you, who live in the park, that you enjoy living there and that it's a valuable resource to you and that you have not felt disturbed by any noise, dust, or odor. Does anyone who lives in the park wish to express opposition to the petition? The appeal for, okay. Does any...
Go ahead.
Sir, do you live in the...
Opposition to this.
Opposition. Okay. Could you please approach? Name, address, and you have three minutes to speak.
Yes, my name is Douglas Caves and I live at 1345 Ringe Road, Pittsburgh. I'm a directed butter. I wanted to start out by saying that I don't think anybody opposes seeing this project completed. I think the big overarching question is, when? 16 years is a long time. Now, I suppose if you bought a house and you live on this property, hearing that constant very loud, bang, 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 for eight hours a day is something you can live with. But for the abutters, as the counselor so said, and I won't go on, but it has disturbed the peace of the neighborhood. It has changed the character of the neighborhood. I recently, when I, when this project started, I worked out in Medford. I was gone for the 12 hours a day. I'd never heard this noise. When I retired, I couldn't believe it. I just, I could not believe that this had been going on for over a decade. So I just wanted to express that, though, if you have a vested interest, I suppose you can move with the noise. I have no vested interest. I thought the noise was alarmingly loud, disturbing. The dust is very real. We have to keep our windows closed because, because of the dust, okay? So I just wanted to have a counter viewpoint on the fact that people are saying that the noise is negligible. I have great empathy for anyone who's invested in this and lives there and wants to live in a peaceful home in a very nice area, the northern area of Pittsburgh where it's mostly rural. But the nature of this construction work has interrupted that peace for over 16 years. And that's my point, just as a counterbalance to the notion that everything's hunky-dory because it's not very lovely at all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comment. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to the appeals? Ma'am, please approach. State your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Mary Ellen Mara Christian and I live at 71 Bennett Road in Pittsburgh, Mass. And I just want to say, I certainly understand and it's not about the lovely people that work here, that live at Woodland Estates. Of course, they love it up there. I live up there and it's a beautiful area. So I get that and they do have a vested interest in it, just like Mr. Caves mentioned. I do not. And the noise is terrible. We have been living with it for a very long time and it is very disturbing to the peace. It's plain old, good old-fashioned noise pollution and it really does wear on your mental health. I work outside, we're an active tree farm, we have a forestry program, so I am outside all the time. And I shared with you some videos. I don't know if you had a chance to see it, but just quickly, if you don't mind, I'm on a...
Ma'am, we actually have a video connection to the documents. There were two, I believe, three videos submitted as well as two visits...
Two, one chance to see those.
And some pictures. I don't know if they were all from you, but we have a hookup to display them afterwards.
Okay, so you're all set there?
We're all set.
Okay, good. And I just wanted to say, too, that there's a lot of us that are against any appeal that will be made to overrule the building commissioner's cease and desist order on both of them. There is a petition that I submitted and there's three pages of names on there. So that is from abutters, plenty of neighbors up and down Billings Road and Ringe Road. And I got to tell you, everybody that talked to me is, wants this project done. It has been going on for too long and it's very frustrating when I learned and dug into this a little bit more to understand how this has been going on and to learn that the Zoning Board of Appeals denied this project at one point. And I believe the Planning Board did as well, but the Planning Board did not put their request in on time. So because of this, a statutory grant was granted and that the owner was able to get her permit because of that reason. So here we are 16 years later and it's still going on. We finally got it to the Planning Board and I think that came about because, as in the butter, my Christian and I own the entire east side of the park and there was a water issue going on where the water was pooling over into our property and it was killing our vegetation and trees. Joanne was kind enough and working with the engineer to dig a trench and brought the water away from our property with a ditch, rather, it was temporary fix. But surely after that, the summer went up there and the ditches completely filled back in. The water...
You've reached your time.
Okay. But I just wanted to say that...
2006.
It's been 16 years, the drilling, the blasting, the jackhammering has disturbed us very much and we all want to live in peace again and it really should stop and clean up and be done. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other person here to speak in opposition to the appeals? Seeing none, Mr. Comis, I understand I'm going to pause for a moment. Mr. Commissioner, do you have access to the images we were just discussing?
I do, Madam Chair. I can attempt to put them on the screen.
I believe they're... I believe they're brief, so if you could do that, that would be great.
Okay. Give me a moment.
I do see you. Okay. I'm going to take another comment while you work on that.
Okay.
Mr. Donnelly, you had your hand raised. Welcome. Please state your name, address. You have three minutes for...
My name is, excuse me, Michael Donnelly, 883 Mount Illam Road. There's little doubt that those persons within the development and without the development love their homes. Some of them lived in a rural residential neighborhood ahead of the construction, others moved in in a markedly different environment. I'd be accustomed to living on Main Street if I wasn't already accustomed to living in a rural residential environment, so noise is subjective. I'm glad that people have a place to live and I think what everybody's looking for here is a bit of a sunset on the construction. The Conservation Commission was challenged on the project most recently. We were satisfied with the Woodland Estate performance of Environmental Protection and Wetlands Protection Act. So we're pleased at this point. They needed a little push and it had been a long time in coming. What I recognize here is there's a mining operation going on for the purpose of building houses, nevertheless a mining operation, where multiple hundreds, perhaps thousands of material have left the site. Some of it waiting to be sold onsite. With it comes a lot of noise and some people are looking to an end to it, that's all. I'm going to challenge, not forcefully, but we heard earlier that the Planning Board approved the project. Their approval expired and they were, it was renewed in April. That's a fact. And that renewal perhaps could have been appealed, yes or no? We heard from the attorney that no appeal was made on the initial Planning Board approval. Well, in April, if there was an opportunity to appeal, the Planning Board has yet to file the extension provided in April. Any abutters were unable to appeal that extension. So my challenge to you tonight is to put this to bed one way or the other, close shop, eliminate the mining operation. Planning Board, your challenge to file so that a person can appeal because the appeal was unable to be made because they have yet to do their job. And the Conservation Commission at this point is satisfied, there's a few loose ends to tie up and that's all we want and I'm hoping you want, is to put this to bed. 16 years is long enough and please consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Donnelly. I think we've heard a substantial amount of public comment at this time. I'm going to go back to the Commissioner to see if he was able to get the images to function.
Okay, we're going to give it a shot. Can you see this?
Yes. Thank you. Ms. Christiansen, I believe that you had submitted those videos. I had listened to them and watched them before the hearing and I did hear audibly the pounding...
I have it on my phone.
But those materials are otherwise available to the board members to listen to at another point in time. At this point in time, I, we do have other matters on the agenda, so I am going to move forward. I am going to suspend the hearing and continue. And... And, you know, this is not a close of the hearing, so there's certainly going to be another opportunity for the petitioner to respond. And actually, there is a response that I would like from the petitioner. I am going to say that prior to the hearing, I went through the application materials substantially. I looked at the notice of constructive grant. I had a lot of questions on it. And what I ended up doing was compiling a list of the issues and the questions. And I'd like to allow the petitioner and anyone else who wants to to take some time to respond to those questions. This is a serious issue. I have a lot of people affected by the Order of the Building Commissioner. You have a lot of people affected by the ongoing construction. So I do want to make sure that there's an adequate opportunity to respond. I was able to locate, it was not in your packet, but I was able to locate the recorded version of the constructive grant. The reason that it was difficult to locate is because it was misindexed. It was not indexed properly under your name, and it was not indexed properly under the address. That is the tip of the iceberg with a number of technical issues with the notice of constructive grant, and then some substantive issues that I have related to the PUD and the ability of the planning board to grant it that center around whether a variance was required. So I've listed those issues out for response. But then, going on from those, come the real questions, which should, are the errors so great that the constructive grant was annulity? Or are we at the point, given that the appeal period have passed and that Section 7 has come into play, that any errors or issues with the constructive grant are now not reviewable? If there was a constructive grant, what was granted? The recorded version of the constructive grant had only the first page of the application. And as you will see in the list that I give you, the constructive grant goes back and forth between naming the zoning board and the planning board. It cites Section 352, which is expansion of a pre-existing nonconforming use in one section, Section 72 in another, Section 94 in another, which is site plan review. And it nowhere contains the number of units that was allowed. So I, there may be an opportunity to supply the answer with additional documentation of the application. But that is one of my main questions. And if there was a constructive grant, what was the effect of the planning board actions subsequent to that? We don't have any minutes. We don't have any decisions. It's my understanding that the time for constructive grant in the 2022 hearing has passed with no constructive grant being taken. And it's my understanding informally that the prior hearings after the original 2006 hearings were not public hearings. The totality of that is my question as to whether the interested parties had been given adequate notice, given both the errors in the original grant and the lack of a public hearing up until 2022, to allow them to appeal, to allow them to exert their rights. And I don't have an answer to that question, but I'm asking it, and I'm asking for a response. There is some case law I'd like you to address. You have a claim of estoppel or latches in your appeal, and I'm going to say that I don't think this is the best forum to address that claim to. But if you are going to address it here, you have, in your cited case of Marblehead v. Deary, three requirements for estoppel to be applied. The first is that the property owner has greatly changed their position and reliance on the decision of the municipality. The second is that substantial hardship and expense would be imposed on the owner by enforcement. And the third, because, as you know, estoppel is not normally the rule against municipalities outside of Section 7, that there is no showing that of any public advantage which could result from a rigid and inequitable enforcement of the ordinance. And that, you know, my viewing is that most of the cases on estoppel involve removal. I don't know that that's what the cease and desist orders were doing here. I will say that I don't think on this board or in the city there's any appetite to make people remove their homes. But there is, has certainly been expressed two things. Even in the park owners, you know, they're looking for their roads to be constructed. They're looking for their driveways to be constructed. When I drove up there, there's a substantial portion of the road that's not yet constructed, but there's many homes on it. I don't know why it hasn't been more finished than it is. The cease and desist orders don't explain it to me. But if you do want to address that claim of estoppel, I do need some documentation of the financial hardship from you. On the Section 7, I would like to understand the interplay between that and the requirement in Section 6 that a permit once issued be completed with reasonable expedience, given that we are 18 years down. And then finally, on the earth removal permit, I think the comparative figures that you're looking at, you're looking at the volume of cubic yards to complete the project versus the total of all buildings ever constructed. I think that's apples and oranges, so we would be looking for volume of remaining buildings with volume of remaining removal or volume of the total removal versus volume of the total building, whichever way you want to look at it. So again, I have a written list of those questions. I'm happy to leave those with you. I'm happy if any other person would like to receive a copy to get a copy. I'm not going to ask you for a response right now. I think there's some time that's needed to address that. But I am going to ask if any other board member has a question they would like the petitioner to address. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
You know, likewise, I had a chance to, the packet is, does not include much information as to the constructive grant and everything subsequent that's happened. So I hope that we can be provided with some real concise information. I'm still trying to sift through the number of units that are even allowed based on the constructive grant, because there's no information, there's nothing. I didn't see any plans submitted as to, to the city, as to, here's what we are saying we are entitled to based on that constructive grant. So, you know, some number of units as to where you're at now, what's expected, and how it all fits with the information that was, you know, originally supplied to us.
Am I allowed to respond?
Sure.
I mean-
To the chair. Please direct towards the chair.
A couple of minutes, remembering that you're going to have an opportunity at another hearing. Okay. All right, so I am going to, at this point, look to schedule a continuance of the hearing, looking at the list of questions I had, and which, by the way, you are free to choose not to respond to or to choose to respond by saying the answer is in Section 7, the answer is in the lack of an appeal period. Up to you, but those are my questions. Looking at the list of questions and thinking that some answers would require documentation to be provided, I did think that February was probably the time period necessary to have a good opportunity to respond. Up to you.
Madam Chair, when is your meeting in January?
10th.
10th.
In February?
14th.
I think I would like, if we can, to be placed on the agenda for January 10. And if we're not able to respond timely, we would advise the board in advance and request a continuance to February.
Definitely. Feel free to contact the Building Secretary ahead of time. We'd be happy to reschedule you to February.
Madam Chair, you mentioned that you were able to locate some documents, of which I was unaware. Can the information as to where those documents can be found be provided?
I would be happy to give you the copy of the recorded allowance of the grant of the special permit that I located.
I believe, are you talking about just-
Like to entertain a motion?
I'll make the motion on ZBA 2022-35 and ZBA 2022-36 simultaneously for a continuance until January 10. I don't know if we need any signatures.
Would you agree that the date of submission of the application was November 10, 2022? If we have a request to continue to February, we would ask for a continuance agreement. Okay? Please continue.
Would it be best to have that signed now to avoid any potential constructive grants in the future?
You know, I would certainly like that, but the applicant is not required to.
Do you have a form?
Yes. Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Going to wait on the motion. 10th.
10th, yeah.
Sir.
No, we have two.
Oh, okay. One, two, okay.
Christine, do you have a copy of the special permit? Yes.
Yeah, you do.
That was the list. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a second on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Byrne.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Seeing none. Matters are continued to January 10, 2023.
Both of them or just one?
Both of them. Hope everybody has a good holiday season. So we are back here after a break, and we are going to take the next matter, which is ZBA 2022-32, 33 Pritchard Street. This is a continued request for a special permit under Section 181.313 of the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance to open a motor vehicle repair shop located in the downtown business district.
That's correct.
Welcome. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ariel Arugio, and the address is 33 Pritchard Street, Pittsburgh.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so- Moving on-
You know, there's a, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
One moment.
Certainly.
Yes, Mr. Byrne.
The petition, a special permit to open a motor vehicle repair shop downtown, but actually, it's carrying on a shop that has been down there for 7,500 years, that has been operated as a repair shop right there with Almond Green and-
Yep, so it's a-
I just wanted to, that to open may be misleading.
Thank you, Mr. Byrne. I appreciate the clarification. Sir, you were last here before us in November, and we had some additional requests for you on your special permit. We were looking for a plan showing the type of signage you will be using and proposed improvements, the dumpster location and how it will be screened, and if on city property, a written permission for the use of city property, and any plan for improvement of the exterior of the building. So can you address those three things, please?
Excuse me?
Can you address those three things? There were three requests to you.
The planning, the planning, they're still making the plan. Again, it's no changes. It's like it is the building since 1907. The parking is inside. The whole operation is inside.
Okay. So we had requested a plan showing the type of signage. Can you tell us the type of signage?
What do you mean type of signage?
Describe the sign you intend to put on the building.
The sign I want to put in the building. In my plan in the beginning was put a regular sign, like I said, at the same time I have in the other garage, which is a vinyl. But today, you told me you like to have a better sign, more professional sign. So more professional sign. I believe it's going to be like some frame with illumination. And you asked me to specific letters in the bottom to put, like, only by appointment. And that's the plan. We're going to make the plan. The sign, I want to talk to the people in Apple Road. They build the signs. I don't know if you're familiar with that place. I spoke today with one of the guys and said, well, you told me exactly what you want to put. And basically, if I say the same concern, with a little change about, we're by appointment. It's going to be a nice frame, like, sign.
Mr. Commissioner, could you confirm for me the type of sign that is available without any type of special relief? If you know the dimensions.
What size the sign could be?
What size?
It's dependent upon the amount of linear feet of wall area.
Okay.
And it's something that has to be figured out. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I appreciate the response. Could you talk about the dumpster location and how it will be screened?
And the dumpster location is at the side of the building. The building don't have land outside, so basically, it's the city property. It's by the police department, the little hill above the street. And I asked permission, if I can put it there, not the right permission, I don't ask the city. I asked temporary- I ask temporary between we doing this to the police department. They say if you keep everything clean, don't bother to us.
Did you, do you have an email or any kind of writing from the police department?
No, it was verbal conversation.
And do you...
Before I put the dumpster, you know, it's not like I just put the dumpster there.
Do you have any plan to make any improvements on the outside of the building?
Yes. In summertime, we want to repaint the frames to start it all the way around the windows and trying to make it better, right? It's a 1907 building, so they, for sure, they need few improvements.
Okay. I'm going to ask if any person here would like to speak on, for, or against this petition? Seeing none, I'm going to look for board member comment or questions. Mr. Byrne?
Just a question about signage. Why aren't you using the signs that are attached to the inside of a window like it used to be? When it was a Studebaker dealership, they had it right on the window. It was stenciled on the window, Studebaker.
I can do that.
This will have the name of the...
Is even more easy for me to do something like that.
I don't know. I was just wondering why you weren't doing it.
Can be a good idea. I'm not disappointed with that.
I haven't looked at it in a little bit, but if you, if you go to the glass, I believe that's not something you need a permit for.
Right.
That's my recollection of it. Yeah, we don't, we don't permit that type of sign.
They don't have to pay a fee for it or anything like that.
I do understand what she said. She don't want the just regular.
Yeah, I know what you, I know what you're saying.
You're not allowed to use a temporary, yeah, temporary sign. There's no temporary.
Putting it on the glass would be permanent, but that's, that's just another thought.
Mr. Shatrin?
I don't have any questions. No new information's been presented, so.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes, I apologize if some of the questions I'm about to ask you have been asked upon you in the last meeting because I wasn't present.
Don't worry. Go first.
I'm wondering how many vehicles at a time in the space in question is going to be? How many vehicles are you going to be repairing?
Good question. We are only two guys working there.
Okay.
Me and another guy, which will be with me for 15 years. We have three lift there, so one is out of service right now. I'm waiting for, we'll be done with this situation to put up right new, so eventually it's going to be three lift.
Okay.
So basically, we cannot work more than three cars at the same time because we are two. Why I say three cars? Because sometimes you can do a couple of small shops between you waiting for one car, you do another one, but basically it's set up for three cars at the same time, three lift, three cars. About the parking spaces, we have like a maybe PC for customers, eight parking spaces. But again, it's kind of a little bit over the what I need because we're going to work by appointment. So it's not, and those appointment can be regulated, but today we have a big problem, big issue. Not me, everybody about parts, getting parts.
Sure.
And sometimes I don't do, I don't give an appointment. I work in different. I check the car, let it go, only in cases broken down, you know? Buy the parts, find the problem, buy the parts, and move the car in.
Okay.
Because happens to me a few months ago, I have a car stopped for 10 days there, which one is not convenient for me. It's not convenient for nobody, but it's not convenient for me because I got three lift operations. And if I have to have for 10 days one car, that makes me working two lift only.
Right.
So everything is moving in base of three lift.
Okay. I notice there's a lot of things unrelated to vehicle repair currently in the space. Will the space be solely used for vehicle repair? Or will there also be storage for furniture and stuff that is currently in there now?
Well, basically, the first floor, the main plane, the first floor, since I got my license, is going to be only me. So nothing, the only place you're going to see a couple of couches is going to be in the showroom, where I plan to do, move my dealer license there too, is my second plan. And the couches is going to be like a little kitchen where your coffee machine, a little fridge with a water. You know, like I, every, every garage basically have a waiting room.
Sure.
It's called waiting room. So I don't want nobody around the cars when I'm working. So you move the walk and sit in those couches in that waiting room, watching TV, the news, whatever you want to watch. Relax. That's the plan.
And my final question, sir?
Yes.
Is there a mechanical ventilation system currently in use in the building?
We have hoses, and which one, we have a car running, we stick the hoses in the overhead door. And that's the same way we used to be doing Cali Street.
And the fumes are exited through a hole in the door, is that?
Yes.
Okay.
So talking about that, one of the overhead doors failed a couple of days ago, Romano overhead doors right there on Main Street. They're going to come to replace, and we're going to put out two different vents there. But basically, again, we don't have three, four cars running at the same time, you know?
Right, right. I'm just looking for your safety.
No, I appreciate that. Yes, you look for me.
I have no more questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Gallagher. Mr. McLaughlin, do you have any questions?
Just some comments. Ariel is kind enough to give me a pretty extensive tour. I, I'm a little concerned about having that type of business in an old building like that where the ceiling and everything is open rafters and exposed without any fireproof material. But I'm not the building commissioner, so I'd like to ask Mr. Barbador, when this type of business opens in this type of building, do certain things have to be brought up to code?
If, I think the problem with trying to bring it up to code is that there has, I believe that there has been an auto business in there and that it's going to be the same use that it was before from a building code perspective, meaning S1 use group.
Sure. Everybody has said that they, they think or there has been a business, but I need some concrete evidence that this hasn't been a discontinued use. Because otherwise, why is it before us?
I, it's, that's a great question. I don't know when it was discontinued, but the building code does work a little differently than the zoning code does with respect to uses. They're really looking at the last known use with the building code, whereas the zoning bylaws looking at, was the use pre-existing, non-conforming, and was it abandoned or not used for two years? So it's a bit of a different standard. So just from a building code perspective, I'm not sure that we can bring it up to code unless there's something dangerous.
And I guess you're probably right. You couldn't bring the building up to code, but are there, I mean, are there any safety measures to make this a safer project?
So what I, what I do, Mike, is I make the applicant apply for a certificate of occupancy, and then one of the building inspectors goes through the building and sees if there's anything in there that's dangerous to life or limb or unsafe in terms of light egress or ventilation. And if there's things that need to be done in order to make it safe, they would address it. Or if any modifications were needed, they'd need building permits for it. And if ventilation equipment is being installed or spray booths or other things, then we would bring it up, that portion of it up to code.
Okay, so we don't know what path to go down because we don't know if it was a discontinued use, right?
Do know, I've seen photographic evidence. I've seen cars in there for a long period of time. But, you know, it's like I've got a few years' worth of curbside photos that I've looked at. But I don't know how long that has been or the history beyond that. But I just have to rely on a local inspector to go inside and see.
Do we have permits to be able to fall back on? Are occupancy permits for that type of business? I mean, I would think it has a yearly inspection or something, right?
There is a certificate of...
Yeah, I showed you, I showed you.
There is a certificate...
Certificate for the state.
Of, of inspection, a very, very old one on the wall that I saw when I toured it.
I showed you to YouTube.
Yes, but that's ancient. I'm talking in the last 30 years. Who's been in there? What's it been used for?
Always been used for the same time, same purpose, for garage.
But everybody's telling me...
It's the same roof, it's the same, well, I show you the certificate, guys, from 1947, I believe.
I, I know, and I saw that. What I'm trying to discern is, has that part of the building been used for legitimate automotive repair business over the last 10 or 20 years?
I've had my car repaired there by Almanbrino. I know it's been there.
And, and...
Everybody's hearsay. I'm trying to just find out where we're at.
Madam Chair, if I could make a comment?
Go ahead, Mr. Gallagher.
I own a large garage in the city, and the city clerk sends me a notice every year that has to be, there's a $10 fee because of the gasoline that's currently in the vehicles. That I need to pay the fee and have the permit and post it perhaps. That was something that was issued where there are vehicles being, there's a number of vehicles being stored in that building with gasoline. I would think that the city clerk may have some information about that.
I'm going to pause this discussion for a moment and just clarify. A motor vehicle repair or body shop is allowed by special permit in this district, so we don't need to establish a pre-existing, non-conforming use of zoning.
Thank you.
Certainly, the other issues are, of course, with the safety of the building and the ability to bring it up to code.
I will say that having inspected many garages, they don't have much. Many times, it's one guy and a fire extinguisher. The sprinkler provisions don't kick in for, until it's a very large structure. A lot of these garages, that's, that's what you're relying on. Without those extinguishers, they could be the end of you.
Well, I have a garage in Cleveland for over 15 years, and that's why you, every year, we go.
Get them tagged, yeah. But I mean, literally, there's almost no requirements by the building code to have these things. It's a, in one door in, one door out, and a fire extinguisher, and an exit sign.
And this one, on top of that, they have a sprinkle system, which one is working.
So your building probably is better off that it has at least the sprinkler system.
They have a sprinkle system.
Most of them don't have anything.
No, I, I used to be the other one to have a sprinkle system. I only have like a three fire extinguisher.
Yeah.
Close to the doors, close to the back.
Okay, so we're good.
Well, all right. I'm just going to make my comments. I was there to visit today, certainly already a very busy operation. I think I counted 17 cars in there today. I also just, I wanted to let you know, as I was sitting here, I was looking at the, at the application that you submitted. And I did so because I had a concern reading the description. Today, you discussed with me having motor vehicle sales there. The application, though, and this is the way that you wrote it, and it's the way that it's been advertised, is for motor vehicle repair shop. So because you didn't apply for the sales, we wouldn't be able to deal with that today.
No, no, I know. And I know that because I went to there, and they say, no, no, it's two different things. You need to have these done first, and when you have done the repair part, you come to the city clerk again, and I have to fill it up another application. That's why I did it. To me, it's more easy to do everything at once. But that's the rules they put me on the table. It was not my decision.
That's fine. I just wanted you to be aware.
Thank you.
I, I do want to make sure that we had some timelines in place. I do, of course, remember this building being used for many years for uses associated with automobiles. I mostly remember it being associated with storage. It's not a building that I would have chosen for that purpose, but it's certainly been used and purposed that way for a long time. I did have some concerns about the traffic and the impact on parking. So I think one of the conditions that I would want to see is that you keep it by appointment only so that we don't have any, there's enough residents there. We don't need anybody else parking on the street.
Totally agree with you about that.
Yeah. And so I do want to make sure it's clearly marked that you're by appointment and clearly marked what customers are supposed to do when they get there. They're going to drive in the front, I assume. They're going to, or they're going to go in the pedestrian door on the side.
Like you asked me today if you have any advertising, no. No, my customers, almost, I don't want to say everybody, but almost, a lot of people knows me in this town. I work by recommendations of a recommendation. That's how I build my, my customer. I don't have a Google sign, nothing like that. Everybody comes to my garage, has been coming to my garage for over 15 years. Recommendation by recommendation by recommendation. I don't want to make nothing bigger, like I told you. 15 years ago, I have another type of energy. Today, I want to slow down a little bit and trying to go through my deep retirement time.
I do want to see your signage up within a certain period of time. I am looking for, I think within 60 days would be reasonable, given the weather. I would like to see the dumpster screened. There is an issue because it's not on your property. So I would like you to attempt to do that. And you're going to have, you're going to have to approach the police commissioner or the police department and talk to them. And you're certainly going to need their permission apart from anything else.
Would you like to have like a closed fence, like everybody, at all, so they can take it out in and out?
Yes, and vinyl, not, vinyl, not... Oh, I lost my words. It's too late at night. Chain link, not chain link, vinyl or more attractive, not chain link fencing.
Vinyl or wood?
Vinyl or wood, vinyl or wood. I'm not going to say wrought iron, so.
I'm fine with me.
Okay. But I acknowledge you may not be able to do that because it's not on your property. And so if you find that you can't, get it in writing and submit it to the board, okay? And so you're going to require a writing from the city or the police department saying you can't put the fence up. Okay?
So you recommend to me, let me see if I understand, go to the police department first, ask them if I can pine off fence around the dumpster in that corner. And if they say okay, you guys, okay, we'll do it.
So it's going to be a condition of your permit to do that. And if you, we're going to set a, you know, assuming the other board members are in favor of the permit because we haven't taken a vote yet. And I'm only one person. But what I would want to see is a review date, and then we can check on these conditions being complied with. And if you can't put the fence up, you are to submit a written documentation to us at that time. Okay?
How low you give me for that?
I would like to see that completed within 60 days, but again, we haven't taken a vote, and I am only one board member.
Okay.
So those are my comments. At this point in time, I'm going to close the public hearing. And I am going to look for any board member deliberations on the allowance of the special permit, the denial of the special permit, and any other conditions. Mr. Shatrin, any comments?
Not really. Having toured the facility, I don't really have a lot of concerns other than just the dumpster because I'm a little worried that in the world we live in, we're going to have to have some kind of hold harmless, obviously. If somebody gets hurt over there, it is the city property. That's pretty standard.
The worst can happen. I'm thinking in case issues come with the city or the police department.
So, sir...
Maybe you can have a small dumpster.
Sir, sorry. When I close the public hearing, it stops comment coming in.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I assume it would be some kind of, some kind of hold harmless. That's pretty standard for this, for the city. But they'll, they'll take... standard for this, for the city, but they'll, they'll take care of that. Outside of that, appointment only, hours of operation, something we would look at.
Question. Why can't the dumpster be in the building? Why does it have to be on city property?
There's no, no information that I'm aware of why it can't.
So why don't we get it off the street?
Could do that.
You know, they make those medium-sized ones that roll.
So.
Can I put a dumpster on the street in front of my house?
Well, you do every day, every time you get trash, but you don't leave it there.
I don't know if there's a practical concern regarding the emptying of the dumpster and the access of a vehicle to be able to do that. But as I'm thinking about, looking at this condition, we could certainly craft a condition that says dumpster to be placed inside, if not possible, to be screened, if not allowed documentation to be required, to be provided.
Yeah, regardless of.
That will take away one of the available locations for a vehicle.
Yeah, regardless, at some point, someone's gonna have to empty that thing somehow. A truck is gonna have to pick it up on the street, because where he's proposing it is just to the right of the entrance, in that grassy area. So a truck is gonna have to back up to that thing, scoop it, once a week. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a traffic obstruction, of course, so whether it's inside or out.
Can we open it back up to get some feedback from the applicant?
Okay. We're gonna reopen the hearing. You can respond to the question about whether the dumpster could be inside or not.
That's what I wanna say about maybe if we have issues to put the dumpster there, I can talk to the dumpster company, maybe I have a small one.
Yeah.
Right now, they come two times a month, right? Because it's bigger. Or maybe if I have this, I don't know, I gotta make a phone call, get a small one, and the small one basically is, I think, I believe is like a one yard, like a two little, like what we have home, the two together, and they maybe can come every once in a week, and, and I can roll it inside and roll it outside.
He's a two, it's a two-man operation. It's not like a jiffy.
Yeah, it's not, it.
You know?
Sometimes they come and it's empty, they keep going. The dumpster I have right now, at this moment, sometimes they, they come and it's empty and they just go, and they text me. And on top of that, I got set up with the company right now, they come on Sundays. So they come on Sundays, because Sunday, most of the time, it's no traffic there. And every Sunday, they text me, which is they do, or I can show you, every Sunday, bum, bum. So in that case, it's not that traffic. Sunday is no traffic, don't bother nobody. I did that by my size, trying to make it happen better.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the hearing again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin, is your preference for a condition that states the dumpster to be located inside?
I, I, that's my preference, only because we've ne, we never issue permits or conditions to allow people to operate business on city property. It's just.
We can't authorize that. The authorization has to be, has to come from the city directly.
Sure, sure.
Is there any other condition you would suggest for the property?
No, other than what your original conditions were, at some point, a plan showing improvements, a facade plan. I mean, it was an original request, but other than that, I'm, I'm good, you know?
Mr. Gallagher, do you have any conditions?
I do not. Everything's been covered by previous board members.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. When we met, there was discussion that, right now, the, the area that he is going to be utilizing, right, is a mix. There's, you know, one room filled with political signs, there's another room filled with stuff. So what I discussed with the applicant, he said everything would be cleaned out and that area would be used for his business. So again, is it gonna be a business, or is it gonna be kind of a mixed-use thing of different people within the building?
I can answer that.
I, I, I didn't reopen the hearing, sir, I'm sorry. I, I'm just gonna state that.
You know, if we're gonna.
I do not want, I do not want to get anywhere near regulating putting political signs up or not putting political signs up.
That's, that's.
I, I don't want to.
I'm making a comment of what was in the building, and what I'm saying is that if, if we are giving a special permit for an occupant to use a building for a particular use, it seems like right now it's being used for multiple uses. In the, in the portion of the building that he wants to occupy, there are vehicles that aren't his in different areas, and there are things that he has said this is all going to be going and moving. So my question is, what are we giving a special permit for?
We're giving, we're, we're voting on a special permit for motor vehicle repair.
Okay.
All right. I believe we're at the end of deliberation. I would make the following suggestions regarding conditions, just to reiterate them. Services be rendered by appointment only. Hours of operation.
It's gonna be nine to five.
Monday through Friday.
Monday to Friday.
Saturday.
Saturday is not my plan. Can be like I used to be, eight to 12, four hours. It's not for work. Most of the time, some people cannot come on Friday to pick up the car, and they like to come on Saturday because hours, people working. Basically, that's what I be doing on Saturday for, already for few years.
I'm gonna state eight to three. That would give some leeway. The dumpster to be relocated inside the building. And that be done within 30 days of the issuance of the permit. Professional signage to be installed.
Outside or inside? We still outside?
Either exterior or on the window. Including that services are by appointment only. And that on the exterior, all exterior window trim on the first floor. Including doorways to be repainted.
Soon as it's.
By April 30.
Fair enough.
Given the weather conditions. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I will make the motion on the ZBA 2022-32 for PCM Auto Repairs at 33 Pritchard Street for a special permit for motor vehicle repair.
Is there a second?
I'll second, with conditions.
Are the conditions stated?
With the conditions as stated. Review?
Review date.
Six months?
Six months?
May meeting.
The review may.
Nine.
May 9, 2023. Thank you.
Is there a second on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The special permit passes, so we will issue a written decision. There, the law allows 20 days to appeal the written decision. After the 20 days have expired without the appeal, you will be able to get your special permit.
Okay. You're gonna give me the conditions and I'll read a pimp.
It'll be in a written opinion.
Beautiful, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good luck with your business.
Thank you, thank you, yep.
Calling the next matter on the agenda. Which is ZBA 2022-33, 109 Oak Hill Road, a continued request for a special permit to open a restaurant under Section 181.313, the Pittsburgh zoning ordinance located in the residential C District. Mr. Cordio.
Ms. Tree, how are you doing?
I am fine. How are you, sir?
Very good.
I'm gonna ask you, did you get an updated plan?
Got it.
Got it all?
Okay. Would you like a copy of it?
I would.
A few copies?
Yes, please. While you're passing the copies out, just.
Do you have a PDF on those, Chris?
Hello?
PDF?
I'll look at it with Joe. All right, that looks good. We don't need to. No, too good, too much.
And while we're looking at these, just to review the requests from the last hearing.
Yes.
Floor plans for each floor showing dimensions of various areas, including seating plans for each floor.
Yep.
A parking plan showing the spaces, entrances, exits, landscaping and overall dimension of the entire building with the proposed addition.
Correct.
And all other plan requests stated in the prior continuance decision.
Correct. I went over with Mr. Lorgan, and he added everything that you guys have requested into this plan.
We're gonna take a few minutes to look at the plans.
Sure.
I don't, there's the stairs. Now, is the arrow head pointing down or the arrow head pointing up?
Oh, so that's a stairwell leading.
It's going up, okay. I think it was the other, the other way.
Yeah, well, this one has the arrow up or down. So I guess it goes, I guess he just puts the arrow, and then he, down on his, I guess he goes a little bit. Normally, I would think that the, right, exactly, down, down and out. Oh, that is down, down and out. Okay, so that's from the upper level, yeah. There's no other level.
So I'm gonna ask a couple of questions while I'm looking at this. Can you reiterate the total number of parking spaces on this plan?
How many?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Yep.
Does that include the employee parking that's noted at the top?
That is correct. That's over here on the side next to where new addition.
Are all.
Employee parking, Madison Street side.
Is all parking conforming to dimensions?
Correct. That's what, this is what I told Mr. Lorgan I needed, and he said this is what we, this is what we could get for the conforming property.
There are three spaces designated for employees?
Correct, right on the Madison Street side.
And is that part of the 30?
It's part of the 30, correct.
Are they located outside of the city's right-of-way?
Yes, they are.
Is the parking going to be paved by, I see, existing asphalt to be repaired and resurfaced?
Correct. Doing a full pave, yes, yep.
Parking spaces to be striped?
Correct. Dumpster's in the corner for, and that is right here, with a vinyl fence around it.
And as I recall, the new addition was reduced in size a bit so that it meets the setbacks.
That's correct, yep.
What's the total square footage of the building?
Broken up into sections here. 11 feet, 75 feet, 12 feet 2 inches, so it looks like, 75, 85, 89 by 40.
Now, on the upper level, you have tables and chairs seating.
Correct.
And I believe we have a difference in the parking requirement depending on whether it's seated or it's to be standing. The upper, I have a second plan on Sheet 2 that doesn't show any tables. And I, as I recall, it's gonna be flexible, it can go back and forth.
Correct, where it's gonna be a rental hall as well at the same time, it'll have that flexibility to it, remove and add tables.
All right, so the total seating is listed as 150 on Page 3.
Correct, yep.
And I, I'm gonna tell you that I'm probably gonna look at this, figure out which is the higher parking requirement and have you meet it.
Okay.
Since it could be either way.
Okay, yep.
You have some improvements to the rear of the property?
That is correct. We're gonna do some, some greens back there, some planting, some new concrete for a patio area for the summertime. In the back of the property here, there's an old bocce court, and there's an old, like, pig roasting section that we're gonna remove and repave, I mean, concrete, so we can put patio tables out there.
Do you have a proposal on the type of concrete? Is it gonna be stamped? Is it gonna be?
Yeah, we're gonna do stamped concrete, yeah.
Stained?
Yep.
The front entrance is going to have a new handicapped accessible ramp?
That is correct.
And is, that's the only handicapped accessible entrance to the building?
And one in the rear, with the rear ramp as well, to the second floor, yep.
Thank you. And that'll go to the second floor?
That's the, that's the rear, that's for the second floor, correct, yep.
One kitchen?
One kitchen.
One bar or two bars?
Two bars, one upstairs, one downstairs. Same location as they are now, just updated.
You had some discussion of being usable as a function hall?
Correct.
But the normal day-to-day business is going to be a bar that also serves food?
Correct.
Are you expecting to mostly hold operations on the first floor or the second floor or?
Probably both, because we're gonna have some TVs upstairs, so if people want to sit upstairs with a little bit more room. Downstairs is more like that intimate, smaller bar, and then upstairs, if they want to sit with some more room, the tables be set up, TVs and stuff, so they can go up there as well.
So the expectation is both floors are gonna be open at the same time?
That's correct.
What's the security plan?
We're gonna have, on the weekends, we're gonna have our own private security, security people working, just like we did down at Mill City Pub. On the busier nights, we'll have Thursday, Friday, Saturdays, we'll have someone to work in the door, just for the underage drinking.
You're going through the license commission as well, anyway?
Correct, yep.
What's the proposed time to complete modifications to the building?
We're shooting to be done by the end of August.
And the paving?
Same, once the warm weather hits and they reopen, that's gonna get done right away. So that's something that can be done immediately, and we want to get it done sooner than later, so it can cure before anyone really parks on it.
The end of August to complete the project?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
I'm gonna defer, I, I'm gonna ask, but I assume no one here has a comment on this project or wants to ask any questions.
I got nervous, I saw all those people in here earlier. I'm like, uh-oh.
Fair all for you.
Hey, that's what I thought. I'm like, here they come.
Um, I'm gonna see if board members have any questions for Mr. Cordio, Mr. Byrne? Mr.?
I only have a couple of questions. Obviously, it's all paved now. You're not changing any of that.
Correct.
So have you ever had, has anybody had any concerns about stormwater or anything like that, or is that all manageable?
Yeah, it looks like it's all been done before. The, those manholes, I mean, I'm sorry, water, storm drains at the end of the road there on Plymouth here.
I was gonna say, I'm assuming they're on Plymouth because that runs downhill.
Yep, because everything runs downhill, right down.
And there's, you know, like I said, nothing's really gonna change there.
Yeah, it's like a river going down.
And as far as the back with the?
Yeah, we're gonna make sure everything, what I've got is on the back of the building as well.
Oh, there you go, okay. What is that back area now? Is it paved or?
It's, uh, part of it's paved, part of it's a bocce court. This part up here on, close to the Madison Street side's paved, and this is a bocce court area.
So it's almost impervious, basically now, it's not really gonna change?
Yep.
Okay.
Mr. Gallagher, do you have any questions?
Yes. What is the maximum amount of people that would be allowed in the building during your hours of operation?
Uh, we're shooting for a hundred and fifty.
A hundred and fifty?
Yep, that's our maximum.
I see that you have thirty parking spots. Is that adequate?
Correct. I guess it's five people for every one vehicle is the way this, the parking goes.
Okay.
Is what I was, what Mr. Lorgan had explained to me.
Okay.
When he did the parking plan.
Okay. I'm counting twenty-nine parking spots on the plan, and it looks like one handicapped?
Yep.
How many handicapped spaces are required for?
I told him to put what was required, and this is what he did put, so I'm assuming one?
Um, surprisingly, it is probably one.
Yeah, so I'm assuming it's one.
It's five, two thirty, and then I think thirty-one is two. It, it is surprising that it's not more.
Yeah, he said the same thing about parking for the handicap. He said, put what we need, and that's what he did put.
I mean, you could put more?
Yeah.
I mean, that's up to you.
I mean, it wouldn't hurt to make spot number one here. Yep.
And you, you know, you have a couple, but you wanna have that one at your accessible route, and the other one fairly close to it. I mean, this, this one marked number one would be a good, a good one. Not everybody's gonna need a ramp.
Correct, yeah.
You know, mobility, just mobility challenge.
My question is, do you have enough square footage to add more if needed?
Uh, more parking?
For handicapped?
Uh, we could, the spot where you see one here on the bottom, close, we could probably make that a handicap. That wouldn't be a problem, have two.
Okay.
You know, he, this, we, we only put one because that's what he said it required, so if we have to add a second one, it's not gonna, not gonna hurt us.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin, any questions?
Thank you. Thanks for getting the plan. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Gone by the place a few times since the last meeting. Just tell me about the front of the building.
Yep.
It looks like a club.
Correct.
How are you gonna make it look like a restaurant? What's, what's happening on the facade?
So we're gonna side it, we're gonna go with a deep blue siding, and then right on the rooftop here, we're looking to add a twelve-by-three-foot lit sign on the roof. And then we're gonna keep the old Saint Joe's sign to give it that nostalgia, almost. But our goal is to just new white fascia, new siding, new roof, just to really dress up the front. Put a couple plantings wherever we can in the front of the building to not make it look so much like a club, I guess.
What about the windows? Are they gonna stay?
The windows are gonna stay. We're looking to add a couple of faux peaks onto the roof itself to kinda give it some dimension. They don't serve a purpose, but they'll just add another dimension to the building. So it doesn't have that straight, flat seventy-five-foot roof. We'll have a couple of peaks in between that are signed right in the middle.
Mr. McLaughlin, if you're looking at the parking table, um,
Yeah, I'm trying to thumb through it.
I'm seeing that it's four spaces, uh, one space for every four seats.
Oh, okay.
Not every five seats, so I come out to thirty-seven required spaces.
Oh, okay. So, yeah, he said it was five. I don't know where he got that number from, so.
Mr. Commissioner, if you're online, could you confirm?
So, uh, yes, Madam Chair, so the, a private club needed parking, uh, what Chris was mentioning, which was one, uh, one car for five seats for reasons unknown. They, the city decided that you need one car for four seats for a restaurant. One, a handful of spaces, I'm not sure that, I would have been terribly concerned because I think it'd be more diminut, diminutous than anything else in a pre-existing building if there, because both, both have one seat for, one car for ten linear feet of bench, as well as one for a hundred square feet. So, pretty close to the number. He is going to need two handicap spots.
Thank you.
It's the twenty-sixth space requires a, uh, another.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any further questions?
Yeah, just how do, there's gonna be cars parked on the street, right? I mean, we all know it. What's, what's kind of the plan?
The plan is to not have them parked on the street, obviously. Um, obviously, it's hard to stop people
Yeah.
every day, all day, from parking on the street, but, you know, our goal is to, if someone does, to try and find out who is driving to get them to move into a parking spot. But, you know, obviously, with limited space anyways.
Yeah, I know that, and.
We don't run into that problem, but it's always inevitable, you know what I mean? Even at Mill City Pub, it would fill up, and people would be parking at the Red Star, they'd be parking on Dover Street, or they'd be parking down at Penske and walking some days, so it's always inevitable. You hope to, for it not to happen, but our goal is to try and regulate it with our people working the door to make sure people aren't lined up on Oak Hill or Madison or Plymouth Street as well. We do have some on-street parking on Plymouth Street here. There's like four spots, I think, on that side of the road. So, I mean, they could utilize that as well, where it's kind of like a deadman zone right here on Plymouth with that little park right there across the street, so.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So if there are no other questions from the board, do you have anything to add before we close the hearing?
No, I did speak with Mr. Barbador. We are gonna be sprinkler in the building as well, so we're gonna have a brand-new sprinkler system and everything in there. So, uh, obviously, we are dumping quite a bit of money into here. It's gonna be beautiful when it's done. And, uh, we're hoping for, you know, longevity. I live right up the street, so, you know, if, when I'm not there, I'm never far. I live right up on to that street, so it's not, not too far from Oak Hill Road down here, so. I think that's about it.
Will the restaurant be open, what are the restaurant hours?
Uh, we're looking to, eleven to two. Eleven AM to two AM.
When do you expect opening day?
We're hoping for the, um, first of September. That's our goal. As long as everything gets passed, we'll be right on it. We got everything ready to go. We're just waiting for the okay, and we'll be like little ants.
Has the License Commission been allowing till two AM recently?
Yeah, I, I talked to Lisa down there, and I told her we were applying for a two AM license, and she said there were plenty of them available. So, as far as I know, yes.
Sunday?
Sunday, yes. Yep, seven days a week.
How many employees expected?
We're shooting for fifteen. To cover all the shifts, obviously.
Any other parking area available for them?
We're hoping. We get the, we, like I said, we have this Plymouth Street, we got these four spots here, which will obviously help us with, as well. You know, if we can have our people park here and then put the customers in the parking lot, it'll be better off for us, because then they're not walking into the road, obviously.
When do you expect to have a plan on the sign design?
I have Norrie's Design working on it now, so they should have it shortly. He's doing the, a mock-up for me.
I have a little concern about the description of retaining the Saint Joseph's sign. I, I, I think that it, you know, could use some improvement.
Oh, I agree. We're gonna.
The facade.
Yeah, we're gonna re-electrify it, we're gonna paint the pole, we're gonna put our brand-new sign in there that says the Nash Bar and Grill. So it's gonna be cleaned up and nice. It's not gonna look dilapidated like it does right now.
It doesn't look.
We're actually gonna take that sign and mount it inside the bar in the corner, kinda like a, you know, little nostalgia, so people don't ever forget. It was a Saint Joe's Club for, you know, sixty years. So we're actually putting a little thing in the corner, a little, uh, memory wall of the Saint Joe's Club.
Yeah, I think we can acknowledge that without having the giant Coca-Cola.
Oh, I agree. Exactly. Yeah, it's definitely gonna look a lot better than it does right now.
Yeah. All right, I'm ready to close the public hearing. We're gonna close. Thank you. Deliberations among the board members. Does anybody have a comment on allowance or disallowance?
No, I was just gonna say that I was just looking at through those parking regs, and there's a couple different requirements in there for restaurants based on the type of seating. I don't think it's as critical. And the fact that he's not really increasing the footprint in a way that would require more seating than I had before as a private club. I think that, uh, he's pretty close to that, of course, you know. It would all really depend on whether he's going to have a large function and the bar operating at the same time.
Correct.
That would, would maybe cause some complications. Other than that, no.
Any other comment on allowance or disallowance?
I'm cautiously optimistic. The number, the, the numbers are heavy, but, you know.
I'm cautiously optimistic. It's going to depend on how operations are handled and making sure that, um, you know, it doesn't become a spot where things get out of hand. I'm a little concerned about the parking lot, but I do acknowledge it's an existing building, an existing parking lot that is limited in what you can do with it. It would be nice to see the building get a facelift.
Yes.
I, um, am very happy about the prospect of sprinklers going in, so. I think that's a good thing for the city. Does any, would anyone like to propose conditions on a projected allowance of the special permit?
Sunset clause?
Before occupancy permit issued or sunset clause permanently upon transfer of ownership?
Permanent.
Okay. The applicant was Christopher Cordio entity. Is there an entity involved?
Not yet. We're gonna switch everything over after the fact. Yep.
Okay. If you have an entity name, do you have an entity name? Do you have an entity in existence?
Not yet, no, we're working on it as we speak. It's gonna be the Nash Bar and Grill LLC. They're just drawing up all the paperwork for us.
So I'm going to have a sunset clause that, uh, states the special permit expires upon transfer of ownership from Christopher Cordio or his wholly owned, you are the sole investor.
Correct.
Wholly owned entity designated within thirty days of the date of the decision. That means you have to give him a name.
Correct.
So hours of operation? Eleven AM to two PM, seven days a week?
Two AM.
Two AM.
Two AM?
Parking plan as submitted?
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't want him to assume that because we grant him till two AM that that we supersede the License Commission. If the License Commission says he's only open till twelve, that, let that reflect that that's what we will go along with. It's what the Licensing Commission says, okay?
So hours of operation, eleven AM to two AM, subject to reduction by the License Commission?
We could put a clause in that, um, License Commission, um,
He knows what he wants to say.
Yeah. Conditions become that of the special permit.
Okay. Any commission, any conditions imposed by the Licensing Commissions are incorporated and, uh, become a part of the special permit? Construction to be completed by August thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three?
Although the plan states it, we'll put a condition in parking lot, parking areas to be paved.
And striped? I believe we need to waive the requirement of site plan review due to the fact that the parking and building are pre-existing.
Christine?
And find, and find that the parking is projected to be adequate to meet the needs.
My question is, uh, about the handicap parking. Do we need to put that in the clause that, that there should be two?
Two handicap parking spaces to be constructed. Occupancy not to exceed a hundred and fifty?
Yep.
I would like us to review the signage plan once drafted.
Okay.
So the signage plan to be submitted at review. And as far as the exterior of the building, I, I, correct me if I misheard you, but I think we're talking about all siding being replaced and repainted.
We're actually do all vinyl, so everything's gonna be vinyl, sided with all metal, um, fascia, and all that's, and all the metal around the fascia will be wrapped and with a new roof.
I don't know that that's designated on this plan.
Okay.
So I wanna specify that as part of the conditions.
Yep, absolutely.
Site to be kept clear of construction debris. Dumpsters emptied regularly. Overgrowth maintained during construction. And finally, not to be operated as a public nuisance. I'd be looking for either the suggestion of any other conditions or a motion for approval with the conditions discussed.
Motion to approve with conditions?
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Mr. Cordio?
Thank you guys very much. I really appreciate it. Hopefully you guys come see us when we're open.
You asked for a motion to approve the conditions.
Yes, I did.
We need a second motion to approve the special permit?
I, I made the motion to approve the special permit with conditions.
Oh, okay, sorry.
But I am gonna state that we need a review date, and I want it to be prior to August thirty-first, because I do wanna see that sign plan.
Okay.
What, if we scheduled that for April, would we have the sign?
I was gonna, I was gonna say April, because that would, it was time to get it built and get it on the roof once it's approved.
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, I expect we'll schedule a second review at that meeting around completion time.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right. Mr. Byrne seconded the motion.
Review April, April eleventh?
April eleventh.
Eleven. Perfect.
All right.
I need to get an update on. Thank you guys very much, we appreciate it.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
I hope it turns out as well.
Thank you, sir.
As you hope.
I remember when they used to be white and red, I'm sorry. I never did.
Going to initial approval.
Good, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Next matter on our agenda. ZBA twenty-twenty-two dash zero-six, one thirty-three Cedar Street, continuance of a special permit under section one eighty-one point three-three-two-two of the City of Pittsburgh Code to reinstate a vacant abandoned building and change from one non-conforming use to another less detrimental non-conforming use as a two-family dwelling pursuant to one eighty-one point four-one-six. Attorney Flick, welcome, thank you for your patience in remaining to this late hour.
Good evening, thank you.
At our last meeting, um, we made several factual findings, um, which led us to the need to address the original, um, special permit application. And the special permit is, um, twofold. To resume the use of an abandoned three-family structure that is non-conforming and convert it to a two-family structure, given that the two-family use is a permitted use in the district. Attorney Flick had requested some additional time, so he could be prepared to present on the special permit. Attorney Flick, whenever you're ready.
Uh, thank you very much. I, I would like to say first and foremost that I do think that, um, the issue of exempt structure or use is worthy of reconsideration, uh, by the zoning board of appeals, as there was no factual findings regarding, uh, item number two, the proposed residential use or structure may reduce but will not increase any existing non-conformity. But that be that as it may, uh, moving on with the special permit, um, there's no question that the structure, um, is a legally non-conforming structure. Uh, the use, we've already determined, is, is a legally conforming use, whereas this property's been, was originally constructed as a two-family prior to zoning ever coming into effect, has been a two-family ever since, sits on the same footprint, there's no, not gonna be any expansion of the footprint, uh, or any of the structural, uh, exterior structural aspects of the property. I would suggest that the only issue, uh, that would, uh, really be at play here is the issue of parking. We've submitted a, uh, engineer plan, um, I believe that was already submitted, I have one copy, I believe there'd already been another copy, I don't know, the larger copy would be, uh, requested. Um, and looking at this property, um, the required parking is four space, four spaces for a two-family apartment. Uh, there is, uh, according to the engineer's plans, there's enough parking there for five vehicles, uh, if a porch were removed, uh, the front, the front porch on, I believe it's the southern-facing side of the building were removed, but regardless, if that were not removed, there's still adequate space there for space for four cars. Um, it would necessitate the relocation of existing utility pole. Um, I would suggest that that utility pole would have to be moved, whether this was a single family or a two-family. Um, and that if this was a two-family, you would have, still have to have enough off-street parking for two spaces. So when you look at it from that standpoint, and three vehicles can be parked on one side of the property and one on the other side of the property, uh, this is certainly not more non-conforming than a two-family would be, and a decision otherwise would render this properly, property economically unusable. So basically, from a parking standpoint, based upon this engineering plan, four, four cars can be fit on this property, uh, with a nine-foot by eighteen-foot space for each vehicle, um, and I would, I would propose that it's not, not more non-conforming, not more detrimental to the neighborhood than it has been, as it's been a two-family since its inception in nineteen oh-one. Uh, the, the, uh, neighborhood is filled with multifamily properties, it's right across the street from Pittsburgh State, and there's, uh, this is, uh, this is an area of the city that has a tremendous amount of multifamily properties in it. So it fits within the, the, the neighborhood. It's the same use that it has been for over a hundred years as a two-family, and I believe that as, as such, uh, a special permit is warranted.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm gonna note that the last plan that I have, um, showing a floor plan on the property is by Rosa Design, and if I can get a date on it, I wanna make sure we're looking at Do you see a date on the plan? I don't. There's some very small print on my version, though.
She's gotta get this parking plan, I can't, I haven't.
Do you have a date of the plan? I just wanna make sure we identify it.
I don't have a date of the plan, um, if I can take a look at it and see if, if I can identify a date.
I'm looking at a plan, oh, there you are. Is it? Thank you, what's the date?
Three, six, twenty-two?
Thank you. This is why I should bring my glasses to meetings. Right. Um, Mr. Cross, I know you are here for comment, you are welcome to approach the podium and make your comment.
My comments are gonna be basically the same as they always have been for the past, I don't know how many years this has been going on, but the first thing that caught my attention was moving the utility pole. Where are they gonna move it to? Because when the utility company was up and I happened to own that day, they said they were gonna move it towards my driveway. Now, if they move it towards my driveway, okay, it alleviates some of his problem, but what does it do for me? Second thing is, that utility pole is a boundary marker.
It's what?
It's a boundary marker. That's to my best knowledge, I could be wrong about that. The other thing is, in nineteen oh-one, that might've had two parking spaces, but I don't think anybody in Cedar Street even had a car. And even into the forties, I doubt if two-family house had one car or maybe two at the most. Now, a two-family home could have as many as ten cars in it. There is absolutely no space at all to park on the street, it's residential parking, the stickers are all exhausted. People use it with their stickers, if they don't have a sticker, they get towed or they get fined. We had problems with students' parking there. We alleviated that by constantly calling the police department to keep them off the street. Across the street, there's no parking, there's, in fact, there, there's not even a sidewalk over there. There's only a sidewalk for about thirty feet, the rest of it is all college property and a magnet. So my point is, there is no way that I can see any alleviation to the parking problem by this plan. I haven't seen the plan he's presented, so I don't know what it is, but I, I wouldn't even know how to read it.
Are you proposing that, on the left-hand side of the building, you're gonna fill that area in that's unjointed?
Well, this is according to what, what the engineer has, has prepared within the dimensions of the property.
All right, well, if they do that, there's gonna be no place to put any snow, any type of precipitation, and on top of that, my stockade fence is right on that driveway in this particular building that they're trying to develop. You don't have one inch to open a car door on either side, either to the building or to my property. So if they wanted to try to do this parking plan, it would completely disrupt my side of the, the property, completely. It's just, to me, it's, it's impossible. I mean, if you go by there any time of the year when the school's in session, you cannot even pull in and out of your driveway without constantly trying to, you know, navigate the situation. I know I'm going on and on about this, but it's a dire situation when it comes to parking up there, it's just completely congested, and by this building being redeveloped, or whatever you, you know, term you wanna use, it would just, it would be a nightmare. In fact, when the building was being occupied, there was constant problems with this. Now, with the two buildings going back towards Pearl Street, that have all been done over and people are living in them, they're using those spaces. People from the building on the corner of Pearl and Cedar Street, they've got stickers that they can park down by my house and even further down, there's nothing left, nothing. So that's all I have to say from my part. And on top of that, uh, Mr. Quino, who couldn't be here, he has the same concerns, his letter is in the report, uh, and Kevin Bedard, who lives across the street, who has a sticker, he has the same concerns, he couldn't make it 'cause he has to work. But that's my main concern, I mean, if they wanna make it a, a, a nice single-family house, that would even cause, you know, would be acceptable, probably, I don't know, that's up to you people. But I'm just saying about the parking, I know I'm getting redundant, there's no area left, and if they wanna move that utility pole, where are they gonna move it to? That's my question. Where's it gonna go?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
I'm, I'm asking questions, he said they're gonna move it, where are they gonna move it to? Are they gonna move it back towards his property, or further down the street?
Okay, so, all questions are asked through the chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Um, and just, can you make sure that we have, I'm sure we do, but your address for the record?
Oh, one thirty-seven to one thirty-nine Cedar Street.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cross.
Yeah, but again, that's, again, about the utility pole. The guy said that was up there, the utility man, he said, "Oh, we're just gonna move it, you know, like, two feet towards your..." I said, "You know, I can't even get into my driveway now practically with that situation." So if they wanna move it twenty feet down the road, that's a different story, but that's all I get to say.
Thank you, Mr. Cross.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comment. Um, Attorney Flick, would you like to respond, uh, to the question about the telephone pole?
Yes, I would. Um, well, I'd like to respond to both comments about the parking on that side of the property as well as the pole. If you're, if looking at the property, that side of, Mr. Clark's side of the property, um, is that Clark or, I'm sorry, Cross, okay, uh, sorry, that, that side of his property, that is the existing parking for that building. So whether you're putting two cars there or three cars there, it doesn't change the fact that that is the sole parking side of, that, that is the existing parking side of the building. So it doesn't alleviate the problem, whether you have this as a two-family or a single family, that problem still exists, and if that is the determination of the ZBA, I would suggest that then the determination is that this, this building is an economically, this, this building loses all economic use and it constitutes a regulatory taking at that point. So whether it's a, so, so, that's, that, that side of that, that, excuse me, it's late, that very long day, but the, the, that side of the building is the existing parking for that building, whether it's a single family or a two-family. You're not going to alleviate the problem.
Counselor, what side are we talking about? Facing the building, are we looking at this side or on this side?
On, on the cross side of the property.
Cross side.
Mr. Cross side of the property, that's the north side? Yes.
Yes.
That's the north side of the property.
So if you're facing the property to the left or the right?
Left.
Okay, that's what I thought.
The left side of the property, that's where the existing paved parking area is.
That's Mr. Cross, that's his driveway.
This driveway here goes in about six foot, and then it drops about twelve, twelve feet drop.
Thirty.
No, that's the other side.
I don't understand how you can park a car here.
Well, according to the engineer plan, there's a retaining wall that would be built there, and whether that area would be built up to, to level it.
But if you did that, you're gonna bury two windows for the apartment.
Right.
Because there's two windows to the apartment down here in that, uh...
That's the basement, though, right?
That's the basement, and that's not being...
That's not gonna be an apartment.
That's not gonna be an apartment.
That's, that's the one.
They're gonna fill that all in, huh?
That was the one that was determined to be non, not legal.
It would not be.
They're gonna fill that all in, to put a parking space there?
They would have to, they would have to.
And as far as, in response to the pole, you know, the, the pole is an impediment to both properties, when you look at it that way, and perhaps there's another solution where Unitil could put in two poles to span and avoid having any pole as an obstruction to the driveway, and that's something we'd be willing to consider and explore with Unitil, is there another way to span two poles to avoid a pole that is in such close proximity to the driveway area and imposes an impediment to both properties? So I think that's something that we would be willing to consider, uh, discussing with Unitil.
Do you know, who, who absorbs the cost of all that?
That would most likely be on...
Mr. Lucin?
My phone.
Okay, 'cause two poles is gonna be two, twice as much.
And I, I think, I mean, it's ultimately at the discretion of Unitil, they have the final say on that, it would have to then petition the city for...
I agree, I mean, looking at the property, the only feasible way would be to move it further in front of one thirty-three, like, basically right, right in the center of one thirty-three, because you have driveways on either side.
Right.
You can't move it closer to Mr. Cross, 'cause that's his driveway. So, yeah, there's a lot of unanswered questions there, but, I mean, can it be done? Sure. Will they do it? We don't know.
I do know that they, there's been an initial conversation with them, and they said they would be willing to do it, because they recognize the, um, the impediment that it has to both, both driveways.
Does any other board member have a question for Attorney Flick?
I have some concerns. A retaining wall was mentioned, uh, along the side of the building, but the grade has dropped probably about twenty feet from the first driveway, and I'm talking about the left side of the building, for the utility pole. My question would be, how thick would the retaining wall, uh, need to be, um, in order to support the weight of soil going in, in a vehicle being on top of it? Second question would be, what would be the plan for snow removal? Where would the snow removal go if it would need to be plowed? There's no room to move on that space. My third question is, there is, um, a stockade fence on the other side, is that owned by the abouter? And would a retaining wall would be required on that side as well, I would think it would be, to create stability, to hold all that soil, along with the weight of a vehicle, and potentially the weight of a heavy equipment to plow it?
According to the, the plans from the engineer, uh, it does not have, I don't have the dimensions of the retaining wall on this, I would presume, uh, given that we have a professional engineer who's preparing these plans, uh, that they would meet all required specifications for, um, for weight and resistance that would be necessary to maintain an appropriate retaining wall and, uh, structure there to withhold, withstand that weight.
I would have to reduce the square footage.
Which, which I would suggest that, that all of those, uh, requirements would be subject to approval of the building inspector upon removal and review of final plans. Um, I do believe that that stockade fence is on the property of one thirty-three. fence is on the property of 133. And it does show a concrete retaining wall on the right side of the property as well to be constructed. Whether or not that covered porch is removed, if we're only talking about four vehicles, I don't know that that covered porch would have to be removed. And it does have notes on here to structurally support existing wall of house and waterproof as required. So there are plans in place to address those issues as are being prepared or as have been prepared by the engineer.
There's currently a car parked on that spot on the other side of the property. And it's a pretty small car. The wheels are right up against the retaining wall on one side. And then the door is up against the boundaries to protect the gas meters.
And it shows, right, it shows a distance here of 13.3 feet and 9.3 feet at the back of the car, so it does taper in.
I'm just wondering during icing conditions, what type of safety issues that's going to cause because it's so close to the adjacent building and their gas meters are on that side as well. And what would be the plan for snow removal on that as well? Because the limited, the space is just extremely limited.
Well, I would suggest that the remove, the snow removal, there would have to be some means of dealing with the snow removal into the backyard of the property, even though there is a drop-off down. There is a covered porch there and you could not block the egress, but there would have to be some attempt to pile snow in those areas, or would have to have the snow removed from the property.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. A plan to remove the snow removal from the site. There's just, there isn't any place for it. Okay. I have no further comments. Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. Mr. McLaughlin?
No questions. Thank you.
My comments, and these are really comments more than questions, because I think we've all looked at this plan for a long time. I've seen the parking plan which proposes five spaces. I think that both the construction of those spaces and the existence of those spaces would be very detrimental to the neighborhood and particularly the neighboring properties. However, I also know that this property has gone through the special permit process numerous times. And this board has held the line on looking for a better result for the property in the neighborhood, given that a three-family would be so detrimental. I would love this to go to a one-family, but I think the prospects of doing so in this neighborhood are fairly small. And I would rather see this redeveloped as a two-family than deteriorate into a building that is going to drag the remainder of the neighborhood down with it, which is continued vacancy, continued deterioration. And I don't want to see this building turn into an illegal three-family again. I'm inclined to look at allowance with a number of conditions, including not constructing the parking spaces described, limiting the number of bedrooms, making sure that the garden level is not a living space, which means that it doesn't contain a kitchen and it doesn't contain a bathroom. But I am one board member and I know that there are a lot of very strong opinions on this board about the property. So what I am going to do is close the public hearing. I am going to allow some deliberation from the board members on the allowance or non-allowance of the special permit. If anyone has a preference to start, you're welcome. If not, I'm going to go with Mr. Byrne. Yeah, go ahead.
Since the first time this property appeared before us, we said, there's no parking here. No matter what they do to construct it, there's still no place for them to put the snow. I still don't see any parking permit or the parking permit or the parking package that has been presented to us, in my mind, is unfeasible because I have been to the property. I have measured the property along with Michael to see what they're talking about when it comes to parking. One side of the house has a drop of about eight feet and the other side of the house has a drop of about 12 feet, seven feet from where the beginning of the building is. And it's just not possible to put cars in there. The neighborhood, as been testified here, has had problems forever with parking. So I am just not in favor of granting this permit. That's only my opinion.
Very understood. Mr. Shartford?
All right. So the parking, it would be better if they weren't trying to park in there, in my opinion. If we could squeeze two spaces out of that, it would be a miracle. That's how I feel about the parking over there. Having been to the site, like you said, I know it drops off. Doing the construction that they're describing will be invasive, period. But it's also right there at the college. The market is going to be towards the college students. I don't see anyone, I mean, if you could buy it, you could rent it. But like I said, I'd be looking, same as you, I think that limiting the number of bedrooms, at least either having none or two spaces at max, is all I could even conceive over there of any imagination personally. I'm not an investor, but I just don't see it. I've been there. Removing the porch is, just doesn't sound feasible. You still need steps. And yeah, I get it. It's, you know, parking's tough over there, but having an empty building there for five, 10 years, it can't be better. And, you know, I don't think it will increase the non-conformities that are there because it doesn't have parking. It just doesn't have them. So that's where I stand with it. I'm not opposed to approving some kind of permit with conditions, though, because having this matter come before the board four times or whatever it's been.
Turned down each time.
You know, there's not, going to be a lot of opportunity for a better plan other than a single-family. You would still normally have two parking spaces there regardless. It won't matter. So yeah, I would be in favor of approving it with conditions, obviously in the college area. Renting to multiple unrelated people is a problem that exists. But you are allowed to do it to a certain number. And that's the market I would think you would be trying to reach, is that it's right there. It's walking distance. So that's where I stand with it.
Mr. Gallagher, comment?
Yes, I agree with Eric. However, I would consider the use of the two-family if parking places could be acquired from the hospital, from the college through contract with them, that they were able to engage in a contract and allow the parking spaces through the college. So two on the property and two additional that the university may or may not be in favor of.
Thank you. It's an awful lot. Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is probably the third time this property's been behind, before us. Probably the third time that the person that purchased the property didn't do their due diligence before they bought the property. The board has made great points about its current status and what it could remain. What really bothers me, and it's because I've probably visited this property eight times and I think I've probably used three different tape measures, the parking plan submitted is not accurate, period. You cannot park a car on either side of that property and open the door of either side of the vehicle without either being impeded by the electrical service on one side or the gas meters on the other. It is not a good plan. And we were hoping that if a plan was submitted, it would help alleviate some of the parking issues. I am not an architect, but I wholly believe that the expense and cost to put in all these retaining walls and regrade the property would probably outweigh the investment to just make it a single-family home. Okay? New driveways require a three-foot setback, according to our new bylaws. Why? Because I think the city's seen where driveways have gone in, and in order to open your door, you have to open your door across into the abutter's property. Not acceptable. The building is obsolete. How do I come to that conclusion? Why has it been abandoned for so many years? It's an obsolete building. I want to, I want to speak to 181.11, the purpose, right? The purpose of the chapter. I can go through and I can read a couple of bullets in the chapter. It's late. I'll be brief. Number one, lessen congestion in the streets, right? Number four, prevent overcrowding of land. Number five, avoid undue concentration of population. Number eight, conserve the value of land in buildings. Prevent blight and pollution of the environment. This request, in, you know, from what I see, degrades from the intent of the chapter. The property, we're not taking away the owner's rights to use it as a residential dwelling. It certainly can be used as a single-family. There is a mix of single-family homes in this neighborhood. Just because a neighborhood has multifamilies doesn't make it right or correct for all buildings to be multifamilies. So I just don't feel that it meets the criteria based on what was presented and how the building exists. And the parking plan presented. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLaughlin. We are at the point of a vote or a withdrawal. So without a withdrawal, I'm going to proceed on a vote. I am going to look for a motion to approve the special permit with conditions, conditions to be specified after the vote.
I'll make the motion under ZBA 2022-06 for the property of 133 Cedar Street.
Do we have a second?
Aye.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. So that is a three to two. The motion does not pass. And therefore, the special permit application is denied. Counsel, thank you for your time. Have a good evening.
I did want to say to you that Mr. Lucian got his money's worth out. You have presented a wonderful argument. It's just a tough property.
You definitely fought for him. He should be happy with what he got.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay, yeah.
I didn't hear you correctly.
Hey, did we sing "Welcome Home" to Mercedes yet? Did we sing "Welcome Home" to Mercedes yet?
Thank you, Attorney Flick. We appreciate it.
Mr. Cross, thank you for your comments as well. Appreciate it. Have a good night. We do have a final member, matter on the agenda, and that is ZBA 2021-14, 220 to 222 Albee Street. That is review of the special permit. At the last meeting, some board members wanted to take a final viewing of the property and see if they noted whether any of the conditions of the special permit had been broken or not met. Does any board member want to raise a condition of the special permit that was not met?
Must be it. Admit, naughty boy, I didn't get to that Albee Street.
Given that, I am going to look for a motion to approve the review, given that there are still four people here.
Can you read the conditions one more time for me?
Absolutely.
Just to refresh my memory.
Conditions. The overgrowth is to be taken care of immediately and on a monthly basis until the property is sold. All exterior blemishes to be ameliorated, including the siding to be replaced. I would like to take this opportunity to apologize for my use of the word "ameliorated." A better word could have been used. Second condition, to be used as a two-family only. Third condition, parking to meet dimensional requirements for the use of a two-family dwelling. Four, electric meters are to be reduced to three if both units share a common hallway. If not, meters shall be reduced to a quantity of two. Five, prior to any occupancy permit being issued, all special permit conditions must be satisfied. Six, special permit will expire if renovation work is not completed and an occupancy permit is issued within 18 months from the date of the decision. Seven, any and all wasted or debris to be appropriately disposed of and removed from the property, including any hazardous waste. Eight, all construction debris is to be removed from the exterior of the property and disposed of in accordance with the law within seven days or by December 21st, 2021. Nine, all broken windows to be replaced or repaired. Ten, the basement bulkhead to be replaced. Eleven, the chimney to be repaired and repointed. Twelve, all work to be completed by July 26th, that was of 2022. And then just a reminder, that violation of conditions subjects petitioner to fine. So to repeat, would any board member like to cite a condition that has been broken or not met?
Has the bulkhead been replaced?
I saw replaced bulkhead.
Has it been filed? Has this decision been filed?
We are on the final review of the granted special permit. And the decision from the last meeting has been filed.
With the registry?
Oh, yes. Long ago, the special permit was filed and recorded at the registry.
Have all conditions been met?
I don't know of any condition that has not been met.
I would say yes. I had an opportunity to go and visit the property, I think, as you recall, Christine, because the common owners were there. And my knowledge, the walk around the building, everything had been satisfied within our conditions.
Quality concerns, but not amounting to a.
Absolutely.
Concern with meeting the intent of the decision, but not the letter of the law. In that case, I'm going to look for a motion to approve the review.
Make a motion under ZBA 2021-14. Make a motion under ZBA 2021-14 to approve the review.
Do we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. The review is approved. The final item on our agenda tonight is review of the schedule for 2023.
Do we have a copy? Anybody have a copy?
And I have, oh, good, I have multiple copies.
I made a few.
Thank you, Mercedes.
There you go. So on this one, it's mostly the discussion about the second or the alternative date.
Mm-hmm. So an alternative date of the fourth Tuesday cannot happen because of the conflict with the planning board in this space.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If we have our alternative meeting date as the fourth Tuesday, the planning board has the space.
Can we do the second?
Well, we have the second Tuesday, it's the alternative meeting date.
Have any other choices, Ray?
I wonder if Dan could show the schedule for this space in 2023 on a monthly basis? Is there an opening on the third Tuesday or is that City Council night?
Thursday's the only City Council.
Yep.
Do one meeting a month.
So my suggestion was to move it to a Thursday. Thursdays are a little more flexible.
And that's only if you have something that is really urgent, that you need to do it before the next month, or if you have more than ten cases.
Could we do it the Thursday of the second Thursday of the week? That way, it's an alternate, so we'd still be in the same week.
Dan, is the second Thursday of the month available? Oh, you brought that up.
Yep, I've got it on the schedule and the second Thursday and third Thursday are both good days for this building from how it's commonly used.
Thank you.
I think that's what I saw yesterday.
So the only issue with the second Thursday, it's not really an issue. If we have a large agenda for the month, we might end up using the alternate date to take additional cases and that might mean that we meet twice in one week. If the board has a tolerance for that, that's fine. Again, it's a overflow emergency date.
I'm okay with the same week.
Okay.
It's fresh.
Let's keep that at the second Thursday then. So there would be modifications throughout this proposed agenda to reflect that. And then finally, before closing the meeting, I just want to say a few things. First, I want to welcome Mercedes back as our zoning secretary and I want to thank Kathy Johnson very, very much for all of the help she gave over the past few months. It has been a delight to have you in while Mercedes was gone. And I am just so appreciative that both of you have lent all of your skills to help the ZBA out this year.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you very much to you both.
Kathleen, you'll be back sometime, just don't know when.
Secondly, we've had a change to this venue and the intervention of FATV. I want to thank everybody at FATV for his helping us through this transition and Dan particularly for all of the technical assistance he's provided. And then finally, this has been my first year as chair after the illustrious career of Lauren McNamara. And I wanted to thank all of my board members for helping me through it and for all of the time they've given to the city and the decisions here.
Thank you.
Happy holidays.
And Merry Christmas.
And Merry Christmas to everybody.
Meeting is adjourned, I assume on unanimous consent, right?
Absolutely, yes.
Here, here.
Meeting's adjourned.